Sir Duggar.
Here.
Counsel Hart Mya Prig.
Here.
Counsel Hassan.
Here.
Counsel Kimmy.
Here.
Counsel Teeter.
Here.
Counsel Tivnan.
Here.
Mayor Beatty.
Here. Okay, uh, tonight, uh, we are going to start with public comment and then we'll have, uh, council items, staff items, our lengthy consent agenda. Um, we have, uh, three presentations tonight, a public hearing, and, uh, two work sessions. So it's gonna be an intense night for council. Um, so we'll go ahead and jump right in. We're gonna start with visitor comments. As a reminder, visitor comments is an important part of local government business. However, to help us comply with Oregon's open meeting laws, this is not a time for dialogue, rather a time for us, uh, to listen. If follow-up is needed, our city attorney and our city manager are here and will do any follow-up necessary. Um, with that, we will jump right in. Our first speaker tonight will be from the council chambers, Brett Francis. When he is queued up and ready to go, he'll have three minutes to address the council.
Hi, uh, my name is Brett Francis. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, speaking on the Millikan Extension, does the Millikan Extension and its proposed path to Lombard make common sense? Go stand on the west side of Watson facing east and just see how the four proposed alignments look in the real world and not on a computer. Now walk towards Lombard and imagine it in your mind. It's a pretty twisted path that really feels like it's all about taking buildings and property from the private sector with access to Lombard as a small bonus. I know that you say improving Milliken with the extra wide sidewalks and bike lanes is planning for the future, but there are already a lot of new apartments at the round and the current pedestrian and bicycle traffic on Milliken is low and somewhat not worth considering. If you want a friendly pedestrian and bicycle path, why would you add cars to, to Milliken to Lombard? This is our third go-around on the Milliken Extension in recent years, and you have destroyed the certainty of our tenants. Was the third pass at us designed to scare our tenants out or force a complete overhaul of all the properties? Do you have the money to do this project? What if you go down a path and none of it gets done and the tenants leave? Two of our tenants already have one foot out the door. How could I in good conscience least... But some of these plans seem to be out of hand. Wiping out both Northwest College Buildings or the Thornton Coffee Shop, along with the Highland House and one of Damrose Building common sense. Taking out the Royal Manor Apartments and/or the Motel Six further adds complex, complexity and expense. Common Sense has this stopping at Hall Boulevard with moderate improvements between Hall and Lombard for pedestrians and bicycles. If you do really want all of these businesses along Milliken gone, then I guess go with whatever plan suits your needs. Before making this decision, is everyone at the city on board with the plan for Milliken? Has everyone looked at the pluses and minuses of this project? From my perspective, it feels like this was done under the cover of COVID with not everyone, and I mean everyone, at the city knowing what. The city has had a lot of turnover in the last couple of years with many new people from out of town who really do not know how the traffic flows. They just see it from the latest consulting group on their computer. City employees come and they go, and if they make a mess of things, they have the option of just leaving or starting over somewhere else. This project has already affected and will affect a lot of people and their families. I ask that you give it careful consideration before making a decision. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for taking time to address the council. Uh, next will be Wendy Kroger.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Uh, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you. My name is Wendy Kroger. I live at one-two-zero-three-zero Southwest Settler Way in Beaverton. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As you know, the Friends of Cooper Mountain Nature Park has submitted substantial testimony for the record over a long period of time. We provided written testimony for this work session as well. Tonight, we again emphasize our commitment to completing a 700-acre nature park on Cooper Mountain. With the proposed neighborhood parks within the community plan being so very small, it's even more imperative that a self-sustaining substantial nature park be built. We continue to pressure Metro to use its 2019 Parks and Nature Bond Dollars to protect and restore habitat and clean water, and to expand and care for parks and trails that connect people to nature close to home. Cooper Mountain Nature Park is close to home. It's the last such place close to home. Beaverton can help Metro increase access to all now and in the future by completing a community plan that protects and enhances natural resources through appropriate land use and zoning. I call your attention to our concerns expressed in our written testimony about the limitations of Chapter Seven of the Comprehensive Plan relating to trees and wildlife. You can protect these sensitive areas within the, uh, the new community plan using overlays. Streams and oak savannas also have their own needs for protection. We commend you and your staff for current efforts to craft a community plan that meets Goal Five requirements, builds a green framework, and provides a significant natural resource area overlay boundary that meets metro density requirements outside of the SNRA's. You're going in the right direction. Please stay the course. Our elected leaders of the local jurisdictions surrounding or budding Cooper Mountain hold the future of Cooper Mountain and its nature park in your hands. Your staff indicates in their responses to public comments that more discussions regarding natural resources and, I would say, concomitant financial resources must occur among Metro, THPRD, the city of Beaverton, and we believe Washington County and Tigard. Please spin up and begin an elected convening on Cooper Mountain's natural resources and the Cooper Mountain Nature Park. We owe our children a resilient environmentally rich future close to home. Please help and thank you.
Thank you. Dick Scouton?
Am I, am I clear now? Can you hear me?
Can.
All right, thank you. My apologies. Um, I'm Dick Scouton. I live at one-five-four-one-zero Southwest Heron Court in Beaverton, and I just, uh, just wanna remind you, uh, that, of course, that money that's been set for Cooper Mountain Target Area, our promise for the target area is ultimately, um, money that's been promised to us for some key acquisitions in the Cooper Mountain area. We've been waiting a long time for that. Um, it's our money. We should be aggressive about pursuing that. I assume that you're, that you're doing that. Um, I have found in my, my past, uh, past life as a, as a public official, that Washington County always paid more than its fair share on taxes, uh, given the strong economic engine that we are. So, um, by all means, let's be aggressive about, um, getting that money, uh, for, that's been long promised for us. I, I am optimistic. I think THPRD has hired a great land acquisition agent, so that gives us some confidence collectively, I think, to make this happen. At long last, uh, the land use situation will become clearer in the next year or two, uh, thanks to your good work, and, um, hopefully property owners will feel more confident about, uh, willingly selling land, as we all know this is a willing buyer program. And of course, uh, one of the advantages that we have as a public side is that we could pay for the property outright as opposed to a mere option on land. So that's a very powerful tool that the public has. So I look forward to, uh, at long last, the expansion of the park. Thank you very much for your time. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Dick. Next up, Reggie Frumpkin. All right, Reggie, you ready to go?
Thank you. Uh, dear counsel, this is regarding Agenda Bill two-three-one-five-seven. I'm speaking today to urge the elected leadership of Beaverton and managers to prioritize natural resource and forest conservation on Cooper Mountain. The area is losing tree canopy at an alarming rate and an unsustainable rate as well. Tonight, we must direct the plan in favor of doing the most we can to protect natural resources, so Beaverton's newest neighborhoods are livable now and long into the future. I ask Beaverton's leadership to implement the recommendations of the Climate Action Task Force, as well as the Friends of Cooper Mountain Nature Park Community Group during tonight's work session and subsequent votes. New neighborhoods must effectively incorporate mature trees and preserve adequate spaces for new ones. Additionally, Metro and its partners must fulfill plans of natural area acquisition on Cooper Mountain before all the privately owned forests are destroyed. The city of Beaverton can meaningfully help by requiring what's left to be conserved and protected. We can't allow neighborhoods to be designed with trees taking a backseat to profit. The people of Beaverton don't have time to wait. As temperatures heat up and mature, historic, and ecologically valuable trees remain largely unprotected. Given that Cooper Mountain is the last foreseeable significantly forested area likely to be annexed by the city of Beaverton, and a particularly rare upland forest at that, it is important that the required percentage of surviving tree canopy coverage on Cooper Mountain be set at sixty percent. This would be above Metro's forty percent overall minimum for Beaverton, given that Beaverton's overall tree canopy coverage currently, uh, stands at only twenty-six percent Metro 2007. We should also support the planning staff's proposal to prioritize higher tree canopy density to mitigate warming impacts on the Tuolton River. Recognizing that unique natural resources are the defining characteristic of Cooper Mountain, work with governmental partners to expand and complete the Cooper Mountain Nature Park by protecting area headwaters and stream corridors, wetlands, wildlife areas, tree groves, view sheds, and intact upland habitat in advance of development. In the upper Tuolton River watershed, Cooper Mountain provides a habitat anchor sheltering twenty-seven threatened, endangered, and sensitive species. As a community, we remain committed to retaining and caring for the incredible natural areas, views, waterways, conifers, oak savannas, and woodlands that characterize the riparian zones and upland habitat of Cooper Mountain. Please fully implement the planning recommendations of the Climate Action Task Force and Friends of Cooper Mountain Nature Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Victoria, uh, Frankie? Uh, Victoria? Okay, we'll move on to Mimi Dukas.
Good evening. Am I on?
You are.
Great. My name is Mimi Dukas. I'm with AKS Engineering. I'm actually here on behalf of two different property owners, um, and I'd like to have two three-minute sections, if I may. Um, first, I am here on behalf of the Sparks family. Their property is, uh, Taxlet One-S-two-three-six-nine-hundred. They're located at Tile Flat and Grabhorn Road. Um, this is in regard to the Cooper Mountain, um, concept plan, community plan. Uh, we have submitted two letters, uh, to staff in regards to this dated April ninth and June thirteenth. Um, their property contains a, uh, commercial center. It contains multifamily, and it contains a, um, portion of a park. Um, the, the, um, the Sparks have concerns with how divided their property is, um, how many different disparate uses are on there, and they've been, um, their, their property has been, um, planned with some of the more complicated land uses. We provided this feedback to staff, and we are grateful that their, their recommended revisions include the more flexible design concept of the neighborhood center. Um, this allows the Sparks and the future developer, um, flexibility in trying to navigate the complex, uh, land use provisions that are planned for this district. Um, the devil's in the details. We are going to track how this neighborhood concept may move forward if council supports it. Um, but we think it is probably a step in the right direction, and we appreciate, um, staff listening to our concerns and trying to be creative in, in how to address them. Um, so that is, um, my testimony in regards to the Sparks property. Um, my second testimony is concerning the property, um, owned by the Five Oaks Limited Partnership. It is located at Cameron One-seventy-fifth, near the Roundabout. Um, again, we've submitted letters to both the Planning Commission and to the City Council dated May second, twenty-twenty-three, and July seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three. So again, the Five Oaks property also contains, um, a variety of land uses. Um, in our testimony to the Planning Commission, both at the public hearing and in our written testimony, um, what we are requesting for the Cameron property is, number one, it, it is planned with too many parks. Um, it's an unfair burden. Um, staff has recommended to move one of those parks, so we appreciate that. Again, staff listening. Um, another piece of testimony that we provided was consolidation of the multifamily. There's small sites that are not really matching market needs. Typically, multifamily sites, um, accommodate about two hundred units. That's six to eight acres in size. Again, staff has, uh, responded positively, tried to think creatively, and put a neighborhood, uh, planning district, uh, on this property. The complicating factor for this site is that neighborhood district spans two different properties, and that complicates implementation, uh, particularly for the commercial. That is the most complicated type of land use and very difficult to implement, and it will be one of the last to develop on the mountain. And so it may end up a game of hot potato between the two property owners trying to, um, avoid the commercial in all frankness. Um, so there are complicating factors putting a neighborhood center across two properties. Uh, the Five Oaks partnership is comfortable with multifamily. Um, it's really the commercial that's a concern. It was originally shown on the property to the south at the intersection of Weir and One-seventy-fifth. We think that is the right location for access. Um, and we would request that that commercial location stay put. Um, other than that, we're comfortable with the flexible concept of the neighborhood center, but, um, that commercial is really a complicating factor. Um, again, we appreciate staffs listening to our concerns, um, and trying to respond to it. We hope you listen to some of their feedback and, uh, consider our testimony this evening. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for joining us. Uh, next is Tom Hort. Tom, you've been granted permission to speak. You just have to unmute.
How's that?
Great.
Okay, sorry about that. I, I'm Tom Yort, a retired civil engineer residing at one-five-seven-one-five Southwest Division Street, Beaverton nine-seven-zero-zero-seven. I too am a member of the Friends of Cooper Mountain Nature Park, who, as you know, support efforts by the city, Metro, and other agencies to bring about a significant expansion of the park. The clock is ticking. If we don't act now, the land will be sold for development, and this opportunity will be lost forever. We applaud the city and Clean Water Services staff for choosing to employ resilient stream corridors within the area covered by the Cooper Mountain Community Plan. RSCs will form an important backhoe, backbone of the site's stormwater management system by slowing and storing peak runoff from heavy storms. RSCs will also provide significant natural resource benefits, such as restoring degraded creeks, reducing stream dip cutting and erosion, creating wetlands, providing new habitat for a diverse population of native fauna and flora, and giving rise to new wildlife corridors. This concludes my testimony. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you. Susan Mates?
Am I on?
You are.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Susan Mates. I live at eighty-nine forty-five Northwest Oak Street, Portland. I'm speaking on behalf of Treekeepers of Washington County, a volunteer group focused on protecting existing trees in urban unincorporated Washington County. We need to express our concern that Cooper Mountain is currently in unincorporated Washington County, which has no specific tree protection code, and we ask that the community and this council do whatever is possible to convince Washington County Commissioners to enact legislation to protect the existing trees. Fran Warren is also a member of Treekeepers, a forty-year resident of Cooper Mountain, and she's been very involved as a volunteer in the Cooper Mountain Planning for many years. Fran wishes to express her appreciation for the Beaverton Planning Group, and especially Brian Martin, for willingness not only to listen to the community, but also in implementing some innovative concepts in the Cooper Mountain Plan, which will help to protect as much of the pristine natural resources as possible. As a member of the Friends of Cooper Mountain Nature Park, Fran supports the development of the new zonings identified as residential conservation and the added identification of the significant natural resource areas. We do hope these areas will be heavily incentivized to provide corridors and connectivity to humans and wildlife while providing climate defense and adequate housing. We urge the city of Beaverton to follow through on these proposed protections while preparing detailed development and zoning plans. We strongly urge that the city of Beaverton enforce the generalized protections through adoption policies which are clear, objective, and measurable. We urge Washington County Commissioners to introduce a new specific policy to protect the existing trees on Cooper Mountain to retain the character and environment as it is today, and not allow indiscriminate wholesale clear cunning in anticipation of the Beaverton Protection Policies, as was done on South Cooper Mountain. Thank you, Susan Mates, on behalf of Treekeepers of Washington County.
Thank you. Uh, next, we're gonna go to Rhonda Reister.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor, city councilors. Thank you for the time, and I just wanna reiterate, I just, um, submitted a public comment, um, formally into the city council and mayor emails, uh, last Friday evening. So I just wanted to just reiterate a couple of the points. Um, currently, um, I know you've heard a lot about the Milliken Way Extension Project. I know that there's some major, uh, challenges and concerns with one, um, major, um, business down in the, uh, Downtown Association District Syndicate. Wine Bar is having some construction challenges and permits and communication and collaboration between them and the city and different players at the city. And in my letter on the, the last page, um, by the way, I represent, I'm a taxpayer resident, business owner, and representative as a newly launched Central Beaverton Business Association. But in my last page of my submittal, um, I noted, you know, we have new city staff. We have new former government, new elected officials. We have new programs, new rules, new businesses. We have so many new, 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 new. And especially with the, with, uh, the project, the Milliken Way Extension Project, and the magnitude of that, and how many businesses it is impacting and property owners along that, that short pathway, um, it just seems like to, today, it could be a really good, let's pause, let's reboot, let's get everyone around the table so that we can meet each other, um, learn each of each other's perspectives in person. And I was super excited to learn that it sounds like, uh, city council meetings will be back fully public, um, in our beautiful council chambers, uh, starting in September. So I'm really, really excited about that. Thank you for making that happen. I hope that's real. Um, but my final words were, um, recently I was accused of being the mama bear of Beaverton, and I think I've kinda earned that, and I take that as a huge compliment. I've been in this city, um, as a resident and business, um, owner, and working at, um, this local Beaverton Round property for twenty, twenty-one years, actually, twenty-one years this August, and I'm very proud of that work. So that is a huge compliment to me. I wouldn't be speaking, and I wouldn't be engaged if I didn't care. I love my city. I love, um, the people that I have learned from and grown with, and I just wanna make sure that, um, that we collaborate. Look at Philadelphia. They took a demolished freeway, and they rebuilt it in twelve days because of lots of collaboration from every angle of that community. I want us to get back to that. We had it before. Let's get back to that, and let's work together so that we can all, um, support each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, let's try Victoria again. Uh, she said she wasn't able to unmute from her end.
Awesome. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor. Um, good evening, Mayor and the council. My name is Victoria Frankney. I am the Riverkeeper and Staff Attorney for Tuolton River Keepers. I am speaking on behalf of our organization in support of expanding Cooper Mountain Nature Park. Expanding the nature park to encompass McKernan Creek and its tributaries creates significant environmental protections, and also enhances the quality of the Cooper Mountain community that you guys are so adamantly preparing for. There are several benefits that would occur if the city continues to, continues to develop a community plan to support expansion of the nature park. First, it creates a natural riparian habitat along streams, which not only improves water quality and enhances, enhances fish and wildlife habitat, but it also provides, um, uh, shade, necessary shading. The Tuolton River has historically exceeded its temperature and sediment pollutant loads. By encompassing these streams within the nature park, it would create a natural buffer that would filter pollutant runoff from the nearby development that would be, that is proposed, and also provide that necessary shading to combat, um, the significant pollutant loads. Also, it's important to note prioritizing existing trees in the area provides a significant benefit by stabilizing soils that would otherwise wash into the stream and eventually the Tuolton River. Not only is this great for water quality, but it also provides a safer community build. Initially, expansion would allow for a south, a southwesternmost entrance to the park, which would service a larger portion of the city's populations and residents throughout Washington County. The pandemic has shown us that green spaces go a long way towards mental and physical health. We must do our part to ensure that everyone has easy access to natural areas. And finally, expanding the nature park will help instill green adaptation and mitigation needs for climate change, a, a huge priority that we just saw within the legislative session. Preserving and enhancing tree canopy provides necessary shade and also carbon sequestration. Creating the nature park, the city would be creating climate resilient communities that coexist with nature. Thank you for your time and consideration. I have also submitted a written comment which should be included within your packet. Uh, please let me know if you have any questions concerning these comments, and I look forward to discussing further with you. Thank you for your time.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I also see we have a few more on the nature park, and I just, uh, want to remind people that the city has set up zoning for expansion. We are very pro-expansion, but our, our citizens have voted for a special district park. And so I appreciate you guys coming here and talking to us, but I hope you take this same energy and zeal to the THPRD Board, who is the one that is charged with expansion and raising the money. So we're happy to listen. I will find, we, we almost all agree with you. Let's just make sure the right elected body is hearing the work as well. Sam?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yay! So my name is Sam Sauter, and I'm here to talk about Cooper Mountain, like everybody else, it seems like. Um, we had a proposal to extend the McKernan Creek and Wildlife Quarter by another point-eight miles, by, including three family farms. Um, we're interested in moving the urban growth development boundary to encompass them. They're just downstream and across the, uh, road. Um, our goal is to provide clean air, clean water, healthy trees, housing, and jobs that are specially needed for everyone. We are downstream of the Cooper Nature Park and the current Cooper Mountain Community Plan Development. McKernan Creek and the Cooper Mountain Wildlife Corridor flow through our three family farms. We'd like the wetlands on our farms to be protected to preserve the wilderness. We need your help to protect the waterways and wildlife. We believe that clean water and a healthy environment is critical to making an equitable environment that supports suppressed peoples. Showing love for earth and protecting her for all to thrive is one of the most important things we can do. We'd like your help. Please feel free to contact me at samuelsauter@gmail.com or five-oh- or 503-351-9758. We included a five-page proposal to assist in the process. Thanks in advance. If you're like me, you'll find happiness in making our world better. Yay! Done early!
There you go. Thank you for joining us this evening. Okay, Brooke Bachelor?
Hello. Thank you for hearing me tonight. My name is Dr. Brooke Bachelor, and I'm a family physician in our community concerned about the impacts that removal of trees in green areas has already had on the health of our community. I also want to mention, so I'm a family physician in Beaverton and a resident of unincorporated Washington County. And I just, I see a lot of trees coming down around us and thinking about my future family, my patients, the increasingly rare elf sightings, and I'm really worried, especially since the proposed project exists within and near significant natural resource areas that are supposed to be protected. And that's really why I chose to speak today. I've had the pleasure of reading the 2019 Beaverton Climate Action Plan, where the task force took the time to outline many items to reduce emissions from our community. And as part of that, green spaces were highlighted as beneficial culturally, economically, and also in line with climate equity. Trees and green areas like those surrounding Cooper Mountain not only provide essential wildlife corridors and help prevent landslides through soil stabilization, they also really impact health. And specifically, I just want to focus on health through the lens of environmental justice and climate equity. Trees, I think we can all agree, are amazing and important. They offer mental health benefits and stress reduction benefits in green spaces. And they really help protect us against areas of extreme heat. You might have noticed that in very wealthy areas have more trees, and those who can't live in those areas suffer the disproportionate effects of heat and on these heat islands. And in addition, trees really provide a lot of carbon sequestration benefits, which is much more powerful with older trees. I saw that on the Q and A and the community plan, the draft community plan, that there were recommendations for potential policies that would allow people to essentially pay into a tree fund. But the issue is that those younger trees don't provide nearly as great of carbon sequestration as the older trees do. And once they're gone, they're gone. And also don't really contribute to canopy either, which was another comment in there. So my asks are, you know, the nature park expansion, but I'll also bring that up to the other board. And then also implementing a tree ordinance for Cooper Mountain so that when development starts, there will be some protection for trees and groves. And then also implementing a similar ordinance, the city of Beaverton, for wildlife corridors. And so all these actions clearly would demonstrate commitment to invaluable community resources. If we're going to do what we say we're going to do, these are the exact moments in which we need to choose something different. It's in these more seemingly mundane moments that actual impact happens, and the impacts are far reaching. Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us this evening. John Griffiths?
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, excellent. My name is John Griffiths. I live at 10245 Southwest 153rd Avenue in Beaverton. I've been a resident of the city for thirty-two years. I'm here to talk about the cost of not protecting the significant natural resources on Cooper Mountain. Last year, Metro Council passed its 2019 Parks and Nature Bond Measure Refinement Plan, which restated its vision that Cooper Mountain hosts a, quote, "regionally significant natural area" with a core component of seven hundred acres to support a diversity of plant and animal life and sustain key biological features. Since nineteen ninety-five, Metro has acquired only two hundred and fifty-two acres against its seven hundred acre goal. Two hundred and thirty-one of these acres make up the Cooper Mountain Nature Park. To sustain the key biological features, as Metro puts it, we cannot shortchange this goal. This means protecting the significant natural areas within the community plan boundary currently outside the nature park. Without them, the nature park will remain truncated, lacking the size to sustain the biological diversity it was created to protect, slowly atrophying into an increasingly sterile island as development closes around it and sensitive species fade out. The end result will be what failure looks like from a conservation stewardship point of view. But to this, we must add the failure to provide community members with sustainable and proximal access to nature. Per the 2020 census, there are around two hundred and ten thousand Beaverton, Aloha, and Tiger community members within walking, biking, and easy driving distance of Cooper Mountain. As development proceeds, they will be joined by another thirteen thousand to twenty thousand residents on Cooper Mountain itself. To this must be added greater numbers who will follow, but who will still be bound by the decisions made here. If we fail to protect them, all would not have access to what otherwise would have been the only local, biologically sustainable, regionally significant natural area, one within five miles of downtown Beaverton and three and a half miles of central Aloha. It's sometimes difficult for those with means to recognize the hurdles faced by others in accessing nature. To travel on public transit the ten miles from Beaverton to the next nearest large natural area, Forest Park, takes two hours. The sixteen miles from Beaverton to Shehalim Ridge Nature Park has no public transit. For those with means, it boils down to nearby access, no nearby access. For the rest, it boils down to no access at all. This would be the reality of accessibility failure. I urge the council to use its long lens here. Please protect the significant natural areas within the community plan and partner with other local jurisdictions and Metro in acquiring these parcels from willing sellers for addition to the nature park, just as the city has done in the past at the Millikan Way Nature Park, the Harlewami Woods, and also in other areas. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. All right. Thanks for everyone that came tonight to address the council. We will be moving on now to council items. Any council items this evening?
Yes, I have one, Mayor.
Please.
I've gotten several comments from community members about public safety around Beaverton Central and specifically the garage right next to City Hall. I spoke with the city manager. Does sound like staff have been working with that property owner on security options and improving the environment around the garage and Beaverton Central in general. And it sounds like staff have been working with some urgency on that. So I support that. And I would just love to see similar urgency from the property owner's side of things too. But I just want to share that I'm focusing a lot on Beaverton Central public safety these days.
Any other council new items? Right, staff items?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take the time to introduce some newest members of our leadership team this evening. We have Kim Carroll, Travis Lucky, and Kenya Williams, starting with us. Kim is our new library director, and she has more than twenty years of library experience and recently came from the city of Salem. So welcome, Kim. And Travis is our new Chief Information Officer and Information Technologies and Services Director. We are really excited to have him on board. He comes to us from the state of Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. He also has both public and private sector experience. And then finally, Kenya Williams, he is an accomplished equity practitioner. He is our new Equity Officer and Inclusion Manager, and he comes from Portland Parks and Recreation. And just for folks out there, part of his role will help to establish a more centralized equity and inclusion office to support a strategic vision of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So please welcome Kim, Travis, and Kenya.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing all of you guys in future presentations and getting to know you. Mr. Williams, you should feel lucky that you have a ping pong room right next to your new office, where Travis's office used to be. So I look forward to a friendly game of ping pong here in the near future. Awesome. Thank you, guys, for joining us this evening. Council President, we are going to move on to the consent agenda, and it does look like we're taking it into tonight, the meetings of the Joint Meeting of Bureau and the second one with the consent agenda.
Yep. Thanks, Mayor. I move that we approve the meeting minutes from the special joint City Council Bureau Board meeting of May tenth, 2022.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? See none? Will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Dugger?
Abstain.
Hart Meyer Prigg?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Kimmy?
Abstain.
Teeter?
Abstain.
Tibnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero with two abstentions, three abstentions. Two abstentions.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move that we approve the remainder of the consent agenda as listed on the site.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Counselor Hassan?
Yeah, I just want to take a moment. Very big consent agenda, and I will not go into the details of it. There were a couple agenda bills specifically around funding, so just for reference, AB 23145 and AB 23146. So there's specific agreements around our chamber partnership and our Oregon Startup Center. Super excited for those partnerships. I did ask the city manager what it looks like for us to start institutionalizing racial and climate equity statements in our IGs for the future. It sounds like that's not going to happen in this one, but I would really like us to think about, like, what does language look like? Will we talk about our diversity goals and expectations and our climate goals as well? Because it helps prioritize the organizations that we work with to understand how important that is to us. So just a little part one, I wanted to put that on the record. The second thing I just wanted to share is, as folks know, like, we have been in the budget crisis and we're dealing with just a complex budget. And so when we think about any funding that we're allocating, really emphasizing that we're thinking about Beaverton area businesses and Beaverton area residents in a lot of our partnerships. So just wanted to make sure I put that on record for the organizations that we continue to have partnerships with. Thanks.
All right. So you know their comments. Will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Dugger?
Yes.
Hart Meyer Prigg?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Kimmy?
Yes.
Teeter?
Yes.
Tibnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Sorry, my kid is screaming in the background. We're good now. I am going to issue a proclamation tonight from the office of the mayor. Whereas the city of Beaverton recognized the rich cultural diversity that exists within our community and the values that contributions of individuals from various backgrounds. And whereas the city of Beaverton recognizes the vibrant and diverse South Asian community residing in our city, whose members trace their roots to countries including India, Pakistan, Bangladesh, Sri Lanka, Nepal, Bhutan, and the Maldives. And whereas according to the 2010 census, more than 3.4 million people in the United States trace their heritage to South Asia, making South Asian Americans one of the fastest growing immigrant groups in the United States. And whereas South Asian Americans have a long, rich history in the United States with evidence of South Asian immigration dating back to the seventeen hundreds and their larger presence beginning in the late nineteenth century. And whereas South Asian Americans have faced challenges and discrimination throughout their history, including restrictive immigration acts, legal barriers to citizenship, but have persevered and contributed significantly to various fields, including business, art, entertainment, politics, and community activism. Whereas South Asian Americans have enriched our society through their cultural practice, including food, yoga, classical music, Bollywood, and more, which have gained following among a wide range of Americans. And whereas during South Asian Heritage Month, it is important for community members to come together to promote mutual respect, understanding, and unity among the diverse communities in our city. Now, therefore, I, Lacey Beatty, Mayor of the city of Beaverton, hereby proclaim July twenty twenty-three the South Asian Heritage Month in the city of Beaverton. And we are now going to move on to our first presentation tonight, Agenda Bill 23152, post-session legislative update with Gwen Baldwin, our contracted lobbyist.
Thank you, Mayor. If the recorder's office could screen share the presentation, please.
Thank you. We'll be on this slide for a bit, so patience, please. So during the six-month-long legislative session, nearly three thousand bills were introduced and six hundred and fifty-three passed. Of those bills introduced, Beaverton tracked three hundred and eighty-three bills and actively advocated on seventy-three of them, more than any session prior that I've worked with Beaverton on. Those are the simple metrics. But how to really describe the 2023 legislative session? Well, to paraphrase Representative David Gombert, take all the usual pressures, egos, and issues, compress them into one-third of the building space, add the sounds of drilling, pounding, and potent fumes, and what you're left with is the political and construction zone known as the 2023 legislature. Or, as the Secretary of the Senate, Lori Brocker, put it on the last day of session, the Capitol is where it always smells like where you get your car fixed and sounds like where you get your teeth fixed, times ten. It was a challenging environment. In addition to a new governor, nearly two-thirds of the members and their staff had not experienced an in-person session. There were a third new House members, and no legislative leader had served in their position for more than two years. So there were a lot of new dynamics to adjust to and sort through. The session was launched right after Governor Kotek declared a state of emergency related to housing and homelessness that drove the discussion of housing all session, from housing production to emergency funding for increased shelter capacity. In addition, the federal CHIPS Act funding drove discussions of Oregon's readiness to compete for those federal dollars early in the session. The result was that the fast-track housing and semiconductor packages were like a sixty-day short session placed on top of a long session. In every long session, there are typically a couple of omnibus bills, bills that contain a variety of policy issues, such as typically transportation or taxation. But this session, it seems like almost every major subject area had an omnibus bill that took language from many policy bills, and then even those bills were combined with other bills. So throughout the session, things that might have been supportable or opposed on their own merits were combined with things that were problematic or that were great. It was an extremely challenging dynamic. In early May, the Capitol reeled with the resignation of the Secretary of State, followed shortly by the walkout of the Senate Republicans and the independent over reproductive and gender-affirming care and gun safety bills, a walkout that extended more than five weeks and nearly ended most legislation. But May also brought a remarkable forecast that added about two billion more in the budget discussions and budget bills, and those decisions kicked into high gear mid-month. Finally, on June fifteenth, the Senate walkout ended, and the legislature passed three hundred bills in the last ten days of the session, many including complex funding and policy issues. The deal to get the Republicans back into the building modified House Bill 2002 on gender-affirming and reproductive health care and removed two of the three gun safety bill components in House Bill 2005, including local government's ability to ban concealed weapons in public buildings. In the end, the eighty-second Legislative Assembly completed its work just before four thirty PM on Sunday, June twenty-fifth, with just hours to spare before the constitutional deadline. Next slide. Beaverton headed into this tumultuous session well grounded in its agenda. The 2023 council adopted legislative framework was built off of council priorities that were ripe for legislative action. Beaverton was able to make important progress in each of these areas, with the exception of the multicultural center, which needs the feasibility study and initial legwork to be completed to be well- which needs the feasibility study and initial legwork to be completed to be well-positioned for legislative requests in future sessions. The next few slides will touch on key bills within council priorities. The green plus sign means a bill turned out the way we want it, passed if we supported and didn't pass if we opposed the bill. The orange minus sign means the outcome was not aligned with council and Beaverton's position. Next slide. The end-of-session budget reconciliation bill, Senate Bill fifty-five oh six, also known as the Christmas tree bill for all the ornaments, contained the full funding request for the last dollars needed for the treatment and pump facilities of South Cooper Mountain nonpotable water project known as the Purple Pipe. Securing these funds allows this innovative project to be fully implemented without additional ratepayer burden. This was a textbook-perfect example of a legislative funding request. It had strong partnership with professional staff, essential leadership from Rep. Ken Helm, Chair of the House Water Related Committee, collaboration with his Republican Vice Chair, Rep. Owens, strong backing from Beaverton delegation members, especially Rep. Pham, Senator Compost, plus Majority Leader Lieber, and relentless reinforcement and testimony from Mayor Beatty at each decisive moment. House Bill twenty-two ninety-six extended a pandemic-related statute to allow recently-retired employees to return to full-time work without an impact to their retirement income or requiring the city to pay more in defers. It helps keep costs lower while public services continue to benefit from experienced professional staff. Next slide. Oregon relies on the economic development engines that cities assemble. So it's critical that we keep the effectiveness of the ones we have, such as the opportunity zones near the round and the transit center. House Bill thirty thirty-nine would have undercut the effectiveness of this investment incentive program, and it failed to pass out of committee. With so many other issues having top billing this session, and despite really positive and constructive conversations, House Bill twenty eighty-eight to address the lost state revenue sharing from marijuana taxes couldn't get enough focused energy, and the bill never moved out of committee. Next slide. Sometimes it takes several sessions to make headway on an issue, and House Bill twenty ninety-five is a really good example. Beaverton collaborated closely with the League of Oregon Cities to ensure that all cities have access to the effective transportation safety tools of fixed or mobile photo radar, separate from red light cameras, as well as the more cost-effective ability to decrease speed by ten miles an hour rather than just five miles an hour at a time. In addition to funding the Purple Pipe Project, Senate Bill fifty-five oh six also contains a modest million dollars for the Great Streets Program to improve state-owned highways like Canyon and Hall Boulevard. While the amount is pretty small, it is really important the state is funding what has previously only been federally funded. Paired with the passage of House Bill twenty-seven ninety-three, Representative Bowman's bill to create a jurisdictional transfer advisory committee within the Department of Transportation, more pieces are in place to get real progress in future sessions on safety improvements for state highways that act like urban arterials. Next slide. Although House Bill thirty-four fourteen failed to pass the Senate by one vote on the last day of the session, the housing policies within the bill demanded a huge amount of effort on my part and on staff's part, professional staff's part this session, to ensure that the housing production outcomes could actually be implemented in addition to existing unfunded state mandates, such as the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Regulations and the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis and its required housing production strategies. One of the key areas of this effort was in protecting trees and tree canopies. The language in the final bill made significant progress to doing just that. Next slide. From the Governor's sixty-day package and related agency budgets to many individual bills that ended up forming an end-of-session omnibus housing package, there were significant policy and funding decisions made to increase needed housing where it's needed in Oregon. Decisions that will also require a lot more from local government in workload and costs. The Governor's sixty-day package included requirements for housing production strategies and measurable housing production outcomes, funding for new shelter capacity, which is already letting Beaverton keep the winter shelter open year-round this year, and homeless prevention investments through community action agencies. House Bill thirty-three ninety-five and Senate Bill fifty-five eleven, the Omnibus Housing Package and Oregon Housing and Community Service Agency budget bills, provided significant new funding and policy for more housing stability and production, including millions for continuing shelter and rehousing services in response to the Governor's emergency declaration, rental assistance, eviction protection and tenant protection resources, down payment assistance, and revolving loan funds for homebuyers to increase the equity they can accrue. House Bill twenty seventy-one modified an existing local option tool, allowing cities like Beaverton to increase the efficiency of the multiple-unit property tax exemption program, also known as MUDD, which can help achieve success in our housing production strategy, something I know you're going to be talking about shortly. Senate Bill nine nineteen created a new local option tax abatement tool to incentivize one-time ADU production and housing conversions to duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes so long as they are not used for vacation rentals. Next slide. House Bill thirty-four oh nine, the Omnibus Climate Package, combined several important policy measures and funding for climate-related and environmental justice programs, including increasing heat pump installations to half a million homes by twenty thirty-five, greenhouse gas reduction standards for newer buildings, establishing statewide efficiency performance standards for existing commercial buildings, grants to plan and develop community green infrastructure projects, which, for example, could improve tree canopy in areas with heat islands, incentives and financial assistance to help landowners, tribes, and environmental justice communities support natural climate solutions such as, I say it again, tree canopy and water use for conservation projects, and potential matching funds to help Oregon compete for the billions of federal dollars from the Inflation Reduction Act. Next slide. Looking ahead, a significant amount of funding was allocated to the Emergency Board for action during the interim. So we can expect, I think, more housing investments and additional allocations to leverage federal dollars. In the twenty twenty-four five-week short session, I think we can expect to see more housing policy bills, including another version of House Bill thirty-four fourteen, the Governor's Housing Regulation Adjustment Bill, and other recommendations that will be coming from the Governor's Housing Production Advisory Council. It will be essential that cities raise awareness in these discussions of the infrastructure costs for development, the lack of funding options for cities, and the cost of increased staff workloads. Next slide. I'm happy to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that. That presentation made it seem like the session was just so easy and selective, so I appreciate that. Counselor Kimmy?
Hi, Gwen. How are you?
Getting rebounding, getting back to some sleep. Thanks.
Great. You mentioned about the multicultural center in one of the council priorities, and then you also mentioned that needs feasibility study and something else that I just don't remember right now. But is that requirement, or is that your recommendation, or is it something that we need to discuss further to get this going with the state funding?
It's a practical recommendation. There were so many requests for funding that went nowhere this session, in part because they were looking for money at the front end. They hadn't done any planning work. They hadn't completed feasibility. They hadn't shown that they had their own, if you will, skin in the game. All those things help deliver state dollars. And so I think it's really important that Beaverton decide what is the work, the front-end work that it wants and needs to do in order to be competitive. Otherwise, we're setting ourselves up to be not as competitive in the requests. But there's no strict, like, you must only ask for X amount or X percentage. So that's a council conversation.
Right. So then, how would you recommend us going about doing so to achieve our goal, to get some funding for multicultural center? Because it also involves housing, mental health, youth services, all encompasses all that. So how would you work with the city staff to get that on the agenda for next year?
Well, that feasibility study that you've already put into into motion is critical because that will reaffirm this is what the most viable use of a multicultural center is. This is what we think it will take in terms of capital and fundraising. These are some of the issues and challenges that you may have to overcome, whether that's, you know, interest rate on financing it, or what the possible sources might be of any kind of public or private participation. So those are things that have to happen before we go to the legislature, because those are the first things they'll ask. Do you have a plan? Are you committed? Do you have skin in the game? Have you shown progress in not just talking about particularly a capital ask, but delivering on it? And how are you going to extend it if you, for example, if our request is a capital ask, how are you going to operate it going forward? I will say those are all questions we had to answer for the research when we went in for funding. And if you remember, it took a while. We didn't always get it or the full amount each time we asked.
Oh, yeah, thank you so much. Just for the council's entertainment, I'd like to put this in on the agenda soon enough so that we can talk about this, or I don't know how the mayor would approach it, but so that we can discuss and better strategize and working with Jenny and Gwen. And I have some ideas, and maybe Counselor Hassan also has some ideas of how we should approach it. If we could discuss, I don't know which avenue I should go about. Maybe Mayor can tell me more.
Happy to chime in. I think Gwen has said basically what I've told this council probably five to ten times. We need a plan. I would highly suggest that the council go watch the five-hour-plus testimony to the legislature about funding and all of the asks that came from the community. And so if you, my experience, and I think Gwen basically said it a very kind way as well, we need a plan, and we've already directed the city manager to do that. And so I think if I were you, I would ask the city manager for an update on where we are with what we decided during the council retreat, which was to hire a consultant to make a plan, because you said things that were new to me in your statement. I had no idea the multicultural center was going to have housing. So I still miss, I still don't think that we have an agreement on what it is. And that's why I think from the council retreat, we directed the city manager. So my suggestion is to ask the city manager during council new business to bring us back an update of where we are.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor President?
Gwen, thank you. You always tell stories very clearly, and it's helpful. For me, like, sometimes when I just see the notes, I don't fully understand, and so your narrative is really helpful. So thank you. My question is on HB three, four, zero, nine, the Climate Omnibus Bill. If you could see the future at all or read the tea leaves, like, is there anything that you're seeing around how that is going to help us take advantage of the infrastructure, what is the IRA? Why can't I think of what it stands for? You know, is there anything there that you kind of see as, like, next steps that we should be kind of keeping an eye on and helping advocate for to help Beaverton be able to take advantage of that?
Thank you, Counsel President. I think that most of that is going to be sort of state of Oregon matching to the federal government. I will say that where there are opportunities for direct city funding, our federal lobbyists, CFM, are on it. They are looking for where there is a direct connection, where we don't have to flow through the state. And there are a number of things that sort of fit that bill within the IRA. But there's also a lot dumpster-full of money that is intended to be partnered and applied at the state level, state to federal. And so I think a lot of that is going to be affected by getting the staff together, getting the agencies aligned, and getting the proposals in. And as we get updates from the governor's office in particular, I think there are places where we can reinforce and engage with her staff to improve our ability to be well-positioned for any kind of flow-through grants that are done. Thank you.
Counselor Hassan?
Sure. Thanks. Before I have my question for Gwen, because of the earlier question Counselor Kimmy mentioned, I just wonder if there's an appetite for the council to let Counselor Kimmy and I work with Jenny to kind of start talking a little bit about what we're hearing from the community on the multicultural center. So just something kind of for y'all to think about. I feel like we've got quite a bit of expertise in some of the organizations and groups that we work with. On to Gwen. You talked a lot about funding and just, you know, all the advocacy that was done. In terms of, like, where we actually got funding, can you just provide some clarity? I think I know, but I just would love to hear it directly from you in terms of, like, direct funding that we see the city getting specifically.
In terms of direct funding, like, state to us, one IGA, like we had in some of the ARPA earmarks, the Purple Pipe is that. That was a big request. It was our clear priority. We got that. We also knew going into the legislative session that the governor had made her declaration of emergency. And in that, Beaverton, Hillsborough, Washington County were explicitly named communities, if you will, related to getting early funding. And through that MAC process that we all underwent, and we submitted support to get that winter shelter year-round, right? Because normally it closes in May and then opens up in, I think, November. We didn't want that, not only because we have an ongoing unhoused community member need, but because of heat like this that we're going through. We need to have a place where people can have respite from heat and heat crises. So that's money that, and I don't, I would have to defer back to Jenny and Sia about exactly where it is in terms of getting into our hands. But that commitment was made back in mid-March that Beaverton's winter shelter would be getting that funding to keep it open. I will say that we made as part of a larger ask with mayors and cities from around the state for direct funding the cities to do our work related to unhoused community members in a very sort of broad and interconnected way. I think, and I would say there wasn't any direct dollars unless it was a capital S like we had, that was very direct. There wasn't any of that in the regular budget process related to the unhoused community and community response. That said, there's quite a bit of money, sort of little, there's sort of buckets of targeted areas within the Housing Community Service Agency budgets, both the early one that supported the governor's action plan and then the final one in session. And there may be ways in which we can pursue those dollars. I think the interesting opportunity benefit challenge that Beaverton has is because of the supportive housing services bond, there's an opportunity to get money for basically the same types of things with our Washington partner, and that's money that most other cities don't have in the state. So that puts us somewhat of a disadvantage, and frankly, I think we're also likely to get it faster than going through a grant request and competitive process in the state. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you very much.
I think it's also important to recognize that at the start of this session, the House and Senate leadership repeated multiple message around no funding asks. Like, it was a session where we were told, like, housing, homelessness, the governor's direct orders. So every time we came in and the mayors lobbied quite a bit together over direct funding to cities, we were shut every single time. So the state like us was facing a big budget crunch because of ARPA dollars going away. So even though it rained money on them, the kicker is kicking. So there wasn't as much money as everyone thought there was going to be, which is unfortunate for cities because of all the unfunded mandates that were on top of us, which made it very challenging to navigate. Counselor Dugger?
Yeah. Thanks, Gwen, for this. Quick question around SB fifty-five oh six. The, is there a hierarchy from the state? I know that's just recently passed. So as far as which state highways that money is going to flow towards, or is it like an application process?
Thank you, Counselor, for the question. The Representative Bowman bill that I mentioned is that thing. There hasn't been. It's basically- It's basically been who can arm wrestle and argue that they're in the biggest crisis and that had the most pedestrian fatalities. I mean, it's, it's, it's not a great process. It hasn't been. And so the fund sits in the Department of Transportation, as will this advisory committee. And the responsibility of their advisory committee, which has got very specific seats, is to review potential places for jurisdictional transfer or just bringing up to, you know, good order of condition. And they will recommend up to three state-owned facilities to transfer to local jurisdictions each long session. And so we will have an opportunity to say, all right, we're not quite ready to take responsibility for Canyon going forward, or we are, and how that looks like.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. I was just thinking in terms of particularly around our work with the loop and just how that this might impact that initiative because those intersections are so critical. But yeah, that's super helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I mean, you're spot on. It is a strategic conversation for us to have about what is the timing of, you know, the finish of the planning of a loop and the construction and how that could, how we could go in to make the ask for Kane at that same time.
Yeah.
And Canyon has been consistently ranked in the top four by Metro for state highways. And so we would be in a really good advantageous position to ask. We just have to be ready for what we're asking for.
Okay, cool. Thank you both.
Counselor Teeter?
Yeah, thank you, Gwen. I have two questions. The first is about CPEC implementation. The 2.69 million for CPEC implementation for community members listening, that's the Climate Friendly Equitable Communities. Does that funding governments have to apply for to receive or how is that distributed?
Yes.
How can we get some?
It is, it's a local government grant that is put out by DLCD. And I will tell you that the request from cities, including Beaverton, was that it'd be closer to 30 million. Because we know that when we did our estimate of the range of cost to implement CPEC, it ranged between four and eight million dollars. And that seems like, wow, that's a huge range. And that's because a lot of that cost would be driven by doing either a parking requirement moratorium or a more nuanced, you know, more complicated process. And Beaverton, in the end, council chose to do the parking requirement moratorium. So that, and again, it's just a requirement. It doesn't mean no parking. Let me repeat. This does not mean no parking in Beaverton. It means you can't require specific amounts of parking in specific places. That lowered our cost to that $4 million, approximately $4 million amount. But if you think of Beaverton as one city and there are over 200 cities in the state, that money isn't going to go very far. So.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And just to be clear for anybody listening, we're actually talking more about parking requirements in just a few minutes. So hopefully that'll be finished up tonight. The second question is not about any of the bills that were in the presentation. I'm curious, was there any talk or progress around property tax reform at the state level?
No.
Okay.
That's a very direct, short answer. I think part of this is that is hard stuff. I mean, you think about like VMTs and road user charges and shifting from the gas tax. We've been talking about that for a decade. I think we're finally, as we get to maybe keying up to the 2025 session transportation, next big transportation package, that those things are going to align. But it took years and years and years of we're running out of money, we're running out of money, we're running out of money to maybe get to a point where we're going to make that that change. And I think that's true with property tax. Folks know it's broken system. They know there's inherent unfairness. Literally properties across the street from each other are taxed at different rates. And, and, and there are, there's the problems that come with the caps and the compression. They know all that. The challenge is getting somebody who's decided that is going to be their purpose, being the champion of that. I would say former Senator Mark House was, was, was the person that was being looked to and, and he decided to run for higher office. So it, I mean, I think that's probably what it will take. It will take a champion and ideally a champion on the House and Senate.
Okay, thank you, Gwen.
Yeah, and it's also important to note it doesn't impact them and how they do their business. So it's much harder for us to convince them to do that because it's really like, doesn't matter. It's really got to be driven from the local side, in my opinion. And Commissioner Jayapal from Multnomah County tends to be the leading voice of local government around that. So, thank you Gwen for coming and presenting. I know I have, this is my 10th session, whether it's from my elected job or from my previous job, and it definitely felt like the most intense to me. Having baby right in the middle of it was no easy task for all of us. I know I was in Salem testifying, you know, days after giving birth. And I just want to thank you for the work that you've done on behalf of the city. I think what's hard that the matrix doesn't show is the impact that you had on the bills to make them better. And that's a much harder thing to tell the council about the 50 calls a day or the committees that Gwen sits on and the interacting with LOC and how we made horrible bills manageable or the voice in the room of reason. And I will tell you that Gwen is one of the most respected lobbyists in Salem. And other elected officials call me all the time and say, can I call your lobbyist? I have a question. I need a straight shooter. I need to know the history. I need to know where it is. And so while, while the bills say one thing, the behind the scenes story takes another. So thank you Gwen for your effort on behalf of our city, session after session. And I would say that a session that was aimed at cities and our lack of doing things and their opinion turned out to be not that bad. And a lot of it was your work and the posse you run with. So thank you on behalf of the council.
Thank you.
All right, friends, we're going to do something maybe a little bit unorthodox here. We had missed a public testimony from somebody that sent an email that I happened to see. And so while it's abnormal, I'm going to let them go ahead and get three minutes to talk because I do know it's about an agenda item we're talking about tonight. Is Paul Thornton, are you on? Can we give Paul Thornton speaking access, please?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm going to give you three minutes. There's no timer because it's a little abnormal, but I'm going to set it on my phone. So go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Paul Thornton. I own a coffee roaster and retail business on Millikan, between Watson and Hall. Thank you for the few minutes. I'm going to summarize a letter that I sent in for a public record that included a couple of photos earlier, and I should be with, well within your three minutes. This is in regards to the Southwest Milliken Way Extension Project. Thornton Family Coffee is a block down the road from you. Many of you are familiar with us. I see some of you, you frequent our shop once in a while. We employ myself and five of my adult children. Last year, we opened a second location in the form of a warehouse on Arctic Drive after the recommendation, recommendation from Bill Bergen, Rachel, that that was a suitable place for larger scale wholesale roasting. So we currently are in our phase two of our expansion, which we started about, about 20 months ago. Our plan is to move our wholesale portion of our business to this other location and operate wholesale there in a suitable industrial area. Our current investments into our second phase so far has exceeded about $75,000. We started the planning for expansion of our, we started the planning for our expansion at our Milliken location about a year ago, and we are now on pause. The expansion included a, building out our current space, doing a, a facelift remodel, installing a coffee tasting center similar to what you'd see at a vineyard, indoor seating line and coffee shop. We are currently the highest rated coffee shop in the Portland metropolitan area with over hundreds of five-star reviews. We do something that no one in Beaverton does, and we believe that you want our type of business here. This phase two is on hold because of the lack of clear direction. The city is heading toward regarding the Milliken project. It's extensive for us to pause. It's very expensive for us to pause. It prevents us from hiring employees, which we need. It is holding up any kind of facelift project that we have been planning which happened, we were informed of the options one month ago, one week before our permits were going to be submitted. In the event that we have to move, I would ask, I would ask at our expenses to make this move, which includes still unpaid for depreciated items, the cost of this is going to be around $700,000 of a loss for us if we have to move. That includes a year-long process of a move, which we are planning anyway to a certain degree, but we plan on staying there. But that walk-up window that we have in our shop is our main revenue and any option other than option number one in the city's plans will force us to move. We just won't be able to operate in that location. I don't know who is going to cover that $700,000 loss. I don't know what to do about it. I've been involved in the Milliken Loop meetings, except for one. I've made every one of them because of the safety concerns, which are really currently being delayed to allow the city to secure valuable land. These, these safety issues could be relatively simple.
Thank you.
Prox talks on Milliken.
I've let you go way over the three minutes. Could you summarize? You want us to choose option one and then I will have staff do some more follow-up with you so we understand more your concerns. And I know we all read your documentation you sent in.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Council President.
I'll take over for a little bit. So the next agenda item is our capital improvement plan pilot prioritization process update. How many peas was that, Jocelyn? The mic is yours. I can't hear you, Jocelyn. Nope, still, still silent. Now she's frozen.
Uh-oh.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll just apologize to anybody else in the cubes, which is Sambo behind me that will hear. But thank you. I'll just scratch the how many peas and how many times can you say the CIP prioritization pilot process update joke off the top. But my name is Jocelyn Blake. I'm the CIP Program Manager and I'm joined today by Jeff Hansiker, our City Engineer. And we're here to just give you a short update on the pilot program. So to just start us off, we did come to council last February to affirm what this pilot process will look like. Today, we have successfully scored 39 CIP projects. In your packet, you'll see a list of those projects scored from total, from the highest total score to the lowest. And this was really a move to reformat the CIP to be built around the prioritization process as well as increasing the transparency around how our CIP projects are funded. And the pilot project was really an opportunity for staff to use what was currently budgeted for this fiscal year to test out the prioritization methodology in a year that we're really only adding a handful of projects because of staff's current workload. We're in the middle of, as you all know, the large WIFIA projects. We have some major transportation projects that we've been hearing about tonight. So this was an opportunity on the administrative side to take a pause and really look at how we're moving forward in the future when we are tasked to add more projects to the CIP. And the process included the individual project managers. And I just realized that you do not see the slides. So I apologize. I will share my screen. When I had to switch over, it did not work with that. Can you see?
It's loading now.
Okay, my apologies. I completely like to be unplugged.
Okay, so we can see it. It's just on. There we go. Perfect. Thanks, Jocelyn.
So the process really included the individual project managers filling out the scorecards. And that went to a scoring committee of five individual technical experts across the city that you can see on the screen. You'll hear more from Jeff in just a bit about the lessons learned around that scoring process. But I did want to just take a second to shout out these five members for the last six months of hard work to get this pilot process off the ground. So the results of the pilot process really showcase the flexibility of the scorecard as a budgeting tool. As you can see here, I've outlined just a few examples to go through with council because it really showcases how the tool can be used in different aspects. So that top project being the loop. One of the things that we learned was holistically, the tool prioritizes large, large-scale projects because they typically tick a lot of council's goals, right? The loop is a really great example of that where it has the health and safety, the economic and the DEI all reflected in one project. And so when we're going from a total score basis, that ranks right at the top, which was the intention of the scorecard. But one of the reasons that we really wanted to itemize it by category was there, there are these other projects. And you'll see a couple of examples here in the East Transmission Intertie and Schiller and Eighty-Four Sanitary Sewer Rehab, where they scored very high in individual categories. So Schiller and Eighty-Four is a maintenance project. You can see it had the highest maintenance responsibility and health and safety scores out of any project. While these are all budgeted projects, in the future, this would still be a project that staff would recommend funding, even though its total score didn't reach the top priority because we would fund this using rates and charges, which we collect from our customers because, for the maintenance and operation of the city, which is what this project is geared to do. Similarly, the East Transmission Intertie scored very high. You can see an economic vitality as well as partnerships because it's an expansion project that's meant to bring a new water source to parts of Beaverton. And that's essentially what we collect SDC score. So while this might not be a top five total project, it would still be something that staff would recommend in the future that would be, that should be looked at for SDC eligibility. And this also speaks to the flexibility that the council is going to be faced with in the future where the top projects are probably going to be multi-year, very large projects. And in some years, we might not be able to afford them all at one time. And so this lets us look at the full comprehensive list and what's possible for the short term. And then it also directs staff at what we should be working towards in the long term. And to Gwen's great presentation and going to count the state legislature about Purple Pipe and finding those supplementary sources of funding so that we can tick away at those really high priority projects. And with that, I'm going to send it over to Jeff to talk about scoring.
Yeah, talk about the scoring process and the, some lessons learned from it a little bit. As Jocelyn showed, previously I was one of the scorers. My area that I focused on was operations and maintenance as well as health and safety. So right in my wheelhouse. And on a personal level, I found the scoring to be very objective and an informative process, which was obviously our goal going into it. So good job, team. The scorers were provided a scoring guide that was developed by the CIP team that helped us objectively score each of our questions. But it also allowed a little bit of flexibility within it so that we could use our individual expertise and background knowledge to move the scores up slightly one or two down to account.
To account for information that we might have that might not be provided. But obviously with any new process, we're going to be looking for improvements. And Jocelyn's done a great job of building into the process from the, from the bottom up. The ability to bring in recommendations and giving the team the space to talk about those. Recommendations and how we can implement them moving forward. So a few that I wanted to. Show, talk about today, um, the first was, we did find that some of the questions could be refined a little bit. This would be to help the project managers provide the information that the scorers needed to score the projects. There was a variety of answers on some of them and we're looking to make it a little bit more consistent. We're also looking for. The ability or the CIP team is looking for the ability to use consistent data sources across all the projects. A great example of this, of this is within DEI. Where we were aligning our data sources with those used by Metro and using that same data source for every single project. All the way through. And we're going to be looking for more data sources like that. And then finally, the scoring committee team talked about wanting to add a short meeting between the scoring committee. And individual project managers for each project that allows us to ask some additional questions, make. Uh, requests for additional information from the project manager so that we did score our pro, our questions. But the additional side benefit for that is it brings in these people with different expertise in all these different areas. Earlier into the CIP projects and how it allows us to make recommendations that help develop projects. That meet more of the council's goals and priorities moving forward.
Okay, so next steps in our process, um, as Jeff mentioned, we are going to. Um, take a month or so to really sit with the team and dive into the questions, figure out clarity and refinements. Um, the bulk of the score, scorecard will remain the same, but it is really, um, from the interpretation side of those filling it out. To make sure that they have all the tools that they need to provide the answers that we're looking for. So after that refinement, um, we're going to be moving right into scoring for next fiscal year. And that's really intentional as we try to align the CIP process with the budget process going forward. The pilot process was a little different because we were taking projects that were already budgeted for. But now we're moving into the process of how do we get you, the city council, information. Before budget so that you can provide us feedback that we can then take to use to build the CIP budget next fiscal year. So we're going to be identifying prospective projects and scoring them. Um, in anticipation for the council retreat in November. And then taking that feedback and then starting in January, working with finance to figure out how we, um, put together. Uh, a comprehensive budget and build the CIP, similar to the one that you, you're seeing in your packet today. Um, but there will be more budgetary decisions, like I said. And with that, that's the end of our presentation and we're happy to take any comments or questions. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, Jocelyn and Jeff. Um, it looks like we've got about eight, nine minutes for questions, so we'll kick it off with Counselor Duggar.
I saw the, uh, diversity and inclusion. Can you tell me where accessibility fits in and how you would score that, right? Like, and I'm thinking specifically, uh, for people that are disabled, right? Like. You know. Yeah, just, just can you just elaborate a little bit on that and, and where that would fit in?
Yes, absolutely. And I believe this did come up in one of our, um, first council sessions. So we went through in the DEI section, one of the things that we're asking, um, when they're, we're looking at the data. Is to look at the demographics within their area. And specifically on all projects, um, they have to do this, but also with transportation. We're asking about the proximity to pedestrian generation as well. So when you're thinking about schools. And, um, places of business and shopping. Um, so each question kind of has a piece of it to look at it from a whole. But specifically in the data piece for DEI, we do ask about, um, the populations of people, um, living with a disability. And how that compares to Beaverton on average. Um, so that we can see if we're targeting those neighborhoods that have higher levels, um, of people with disabilities or people of color. So that when we're thinking about those maintenance investments and specifically the transportation investments with Excel. Accessibility updates, we can be more targeted.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counselor Teter.
Yeah, thank you, Justin and Jeff. Um, I, I told Jocelyn and Jeff in the, in our council and staff briefing. And that I really appreciated this. And I think that this is a really great step and, and the right direction of the kind of role that I think council should be having with, with staff projects that are really big like this. So for community members who might be watching, this might seem technical or very administrative. But this is very meaningful because it can help us align. Our council values and priorities with what the community is actually needing with regards to infrastructure. Making sure our pipes, our water pipes aren't breaking and our roads are getting fixed. So this is really exciting. Great job to staff who worked on this and the review team too. It's really helpful for me and if we need to make changes to it or improve it in the future. I'm happy to, to work with staff to do that, but this is a really great start. So thank you for this.
Counselor Hassan.
Yeah, quick, really quick question. Obviously kudos, thanks. I won't waste too much time giving the kudos and thanks, but it's there. Do you, are you finding, and this is like a really technical-ish question, so you know, feel free to respond as you feel appropriate. Like, is there a concern or worry around like folks that could be affected by some of these areas? Like, so that the people on the committee might live in those areas? Like, is that something that you guys have just kind of thought about or thought through where like? Not that Jeff would do this, right? But just like, oh, this is down the street, you know what I mean? Like, is there any thought around that or, or what you might think of doing or what you could do? Just to kind of think of that from an objective, like, perspective?
Honestly, that is not something that the committee has discussed. My first, um, kind of thought with that is we have some layers, um, of where our projects are coming from. And one of the goals of the scorecard is to kind of split those things out. So that it is a collective decision that's being made. So one of the layers that I want to mention, um, where do these projects come from, right? And, and are they coming from Jeff who's sliding a note under the table about his cul-de-sac? Uh, they're not. And we do want to take into account that, um, the community is reaching out to us. And that is one of the questions, um, and specifically how many community members are reaching out to us? And how many community members is this project going to serve? So those are questions in the scorecard. And I'm, I don't want to diminish, you know, one community member, um, having. A capital project issue because that is very significant to us. But also taking into account, um, these areas that have a high criticality of failure and a high impact. Um, so when we're thinking about connections to a hospital, right? Or an entire neighborhood that's served by one, um, trunk line. But to the scoring process, um, the scorers are split up, so they only score their area of expertise. Um, and then it. Um, goes through the scoring committee. Um, and they will then get to have that opportunity for a conversation with the project manager. And part of the reason for splitting it up, right, is I really wanted to wait the individual voices within there. So that one group did not, um. Have power over the scorecard by any means. So while I did not, um, initially draft this, um, to prevent Jeff from gaming the system. Um, in this scenario. Um, that is something that we can take forward and think about, um, and when we clarify these questions.
Yeah, and to be clear, like, I trust that the process, I do think that those are ways that I just, for you all to continuously think about as you continue to build this out. So thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
And if it wasn't clear, that was all hypothetical. Jeff is a good actor. I just want to make that really clear. Counselor Tippman.
Thank you. I just, uh, I want to revisit again one aspect of how things are scored. Uh, just to make sure I'm wrapping my head around this one category, which is maintenance. And so. A 15 means it requires a ton of maintenance? Is that, or no maintenance at all? Can you explain the, the, um, scale there?
Absolutely. So when we think about a maintenance score, um, so let's take Schiller, for example, the 14 out of the 15. That means. It is a high maintenance priority. That does not necessarily mean it requires a lot of maintenance. And in the CIP rollups, um, we do have a question that asks if it is going to impact future maintenance. And so a high score does not mean yes. Um, it means. That we have thought through and this is an urgent maintenance project. So for the Schiller example, it typically means there is a issue that has been, um, identified by operations staff. Um, there is, uh, an associated risk, um, if that pipe were to fail. And, um, of the location. So it's more about the criticality of failure, but there is, um, the question in there about future maintenance. And that's mainly to make sure that we're thinking to the future and that we have a plan. Of how we're going to incorporate that maintenance, um, into our future operations work plans.
Okay, yeah, because it seemed like there were the two sides of it. One of what is the urgency of getting this done and how does that affect where it lands in the pecking order? And the other is what does this cost us once it's done? Um, so the, what does it cost us once it's done? You said that's rolled up in a different one or is that rolled up in this one too?
It's rolled up in this one and there, it's a specific question. Um, but what you'll notice in the weighting, um, within the maintenance category is, um. So the weights of the questions are different. So the highest weight goes to the criticality of failure. Um, so if it's something that is broken and we need to fix it because it has a health and safety impact. That will bump the score higher than something that maybe will increase maintenance down the road. And we quite don't know, um, what that looks like yet. Um, so the, the questions aren't weighted the same. It is more towards criticality of failure. But we did want to include and make sure that staff are working with our operations staff. To make sure that this is something that we can maintain down the road.
That's the, yeah, that was the concern. Um, the other one, and just to clarify, so I understand why these receive zeros. Uh, for instance, Beaverton Shelter. Uh, Development Project and then Traffic Calming Projects, which is kind of a catch-all category. Why do those get a zero?
Yes, I, and thank you for bringing that up because that's something I want to talk about. We're really, one of the big things that I've been working on staff is zero is not a bad thing in this, um, scorecard. And sometimes, um, a project received a zero because that is not the intent of the project. And so when we're looking at. The Beaverton Shelter and the maintenance responsibility. We, um, from the answers, aren't really the maintenance authority, right? It's not a maintenance-driven project. So that's really not what it's intended to be. And so when speaking about those individual categories and how they kind of spur what type of funding we want to put towards each project. When we see a zero in one aspect, especially if it's, um, like economic vitality. That's really showing us that's not an SDC project, right? That's not an expansion project. Um, it's geared towards something else and, but the Beaverton Shelter scored very high. And, um, like health and safety, right? And also our partnership because we're doing that with the county. And so that, um. It's still scored very well. It just isn't a maintenance project. Um, so that's why you'll see a zero on those, but it was not intended, um, to be a negative, if you will, in that context.
Okay, and, and I, I am assuming that it's not taken out like the formula. To reflect that this shouldn't negatively impact the ultimate score because it's not applicable. Is it just that you, you, you have them all under the same formula and you just keep in mind where it might be depressing the score? And so there's a layer of complexity, which is probably where these conversations between. Different departments and people involved in this come into play, right?
Exactly. Um, and when we think about it as a communication tool, right? And I think we're really going to work through this in, um, what we bring you in in November. Because it really does provide us the tools that we need to communicate to you. What our funding recommendation is and then give you all the information that you should need to be able to. Um, evaluate that recommendation, change that recommendation or, um, you know, ask us to look at something differently. So the goal is if we bring you a project and it has a zero for maintenance. You'll get all the information as to why it got a zero for maintenance. And be able to consider that holistically. Um, and in the case of the shelter, right? Even though it has a zero for maintenance, the other priorities that council have given us. Make up for the fact that it's not a maintenance project and that's okay.
Got it. Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification.
All right, I don't see any more hands raised. So Jeff and Jocelyn, thank you so much for coming. We'll look forward to the next update. And, yep, see you later. Our next agenda bill is 23154, the Downtown Beaverton Parks and Open Space Framework Plan. Sarah, take it away.
Thank you and good evening. Uh, I would also like to let you know that with me today is, tonight is Gary Keck from THPRD. Gary and I have been the co-project managers on this plan and Gary will be here, uh, to help answer any questions that you have. I'm going to, uh, get a, share my screen of a brief PowerPoint. I'm going to do that one. Okay, let me know if you can see that. It should be in. A PowerPoint format.
We can see PDF. Great, yeah, we can see it.
Terrific. Uh, well, this is the second touch that we've had with you regarding this plan. What is a little different is that we were able to actually include a draft of the plan. Along with the agenda bill this month for you to review, um, now through September when we come back to you for a final action. When we were here with you last, we did focus on, um, the goals of the plan and some of the actions that support those goals. Tonight, I'm going to focus on a couple of, um, more specific areas. Uh, meaning the type of open space we can expect to see in the future and possible locations of those. Um, parks and open spaces. And then we'll come back to you in September to focus on the implementation strategy, which is in the plan. But for which, um, staff is still noodling a little bit thereon, uh, hence we didn't want to talk about it tonight. And then, uh, hopefully we'll be in a position to take final action in September. All right. Uh, I'm going to focus on parks and open space types for downtown. And first of all, we're going to talk about the types of open spaces that we can expect THPRD to be providing. Uh, many of these, these are categories from their functional plan. Um, several of them are fairly new and reflect. Um, THPRD's interest in providing parks downtown. Uh, the first there is an urban plaza. Most of us know what plazas are. Plazas actually are a very flexible type. Um, they are a, in short, they are a gathering space. Often they're hardscape, but not always. And, uh, per the guidelines that THPRD has adopted, they generally include, um, a couple of what they call components. A component is a, a type of activity. For example, a component could be a, um. A splash pad or a playground or a dog run or a seating area, for example. So plazas, um, can be flexible in size. Plazas can also be located within other types of parks. You could have a neighborhood park that includes a plaza. We could even have a linear park that could have a plaza adjacent to it. So plazas are super flexible. Uh, we have pocket parks. Pocket parks are small parks. Uh, they're generally less than an acre. Sometimes they're even a quarter of an acre, depending on the context and where we can find land. So, um, they also have about two or three types of components, though. Uh, we may see in some instances of them having more, particularly if there's a lot of demand for, um, quite a few components, um, from the public. We have neighborhood parks. Uh, you all know, here's an example of Center Street Park. Neighborhood parks tend to be a little bit larger. They've got more like five components. Uh, in them and of course take more land. Linear parks, uh, we have really great linear parks in, uh, to, in. Well, in THPRD's portfolio, most of them are trails and or nature trails. This happens to be an example, just as something different. I, I think it's maybe a little more robust than we might see in downtown. I, I think it's maybe a little more robust than we might see in downtown Beaverton, but it's kind of fun to look at. And linear parks, in addition to having trails, can be almost, you know, fairly active types of parks. Here, this example in Shanghai has a variety of walking paths as well as a path for wheeled, human-powered vehicles. It's also got some art and it's got a landscape area. So it's quite a complex and interesting linear park. And then we have special use parks. Special use parks are parks that maybe don't fit in other categories or have a specific use, perhaps a more contemplative use, like the Metron's Memorial Park. In addition to parks that we would expect THPRD to provide, there are other types of open spaces that are really critical to the success of downtown and they complement and add to our portfolio of downtowns of, of open spaces downtown. And those include things that are privately owned, publicly accessible spaces. We have a good example in downtown Beaverton. There is a small public plaza between the La Scala and Barcelona residential projects on Lombard. Those are actually on public property, but there is a public use easement. So that little plaza is available to the public to sit in, even though it's not owned by a public agency. And per our conversation about maintenance, the beauty of privately owned, publicly accessible spaces, is they're usually maintained by the, by the property owner. So it's one less thing that the public needs to maintain. And in an era of tight budgets, that's a, that's a helpful thing. This photo here is a particularly nice pu- public space next to the John Ross, which is a mixed-use project in South Waterfront in Portland. This is the corner of a block, a little less than a quarter of a, of a, of a city block. And it's a very quiet contemplative space. It also has a water feature that's not in this photo. Very nice example. We also have unidentified and or what we kind of casually talk about as remnant spaces, though they're maybe a little bit more than leftover spaces. Some good examples of those are the green spaces that we have along the West Line at Lombard. Those are actually nicely manicured spaces. They have benches. Sometimes they have flowers. One of them has a, a dog poop bag dispenser. So those spaces are not necessarily parks. They don't have names necessarily, but they're an important part of our open space framework. And then the plan introduces something called a pause space. Pause spaces are things that we often see in conjunction with wider, more pedestrian-oriented streetscape improvements. We might see them in, with part of the loop. Pause spaces are just generally a, a space for respite. They're usually a bench or two. Maybe there's a drinking fountain. Maybe there's a tree for shade. Maybe there's a wayfinding sign. But they're just small little places that are strategically located that help people get from one space to another comfortably. Okay, I keep having trouble getting to this next slide. It's not showing up and I'm not sure why.
Was the horizontal line, Sarah?
The horizontal line.
Like really colorful, we see those, yeah, the themes.
Okay, yeah, there's a map you're supposed to see. So let me stop sharing and pull up a different slide. Bear with me for a moment. This is odd. I am, they're really, let me take it out of this mode and see if that helps. Okay.
Ms. King?
Yeah.
On the copy that we have on file, your next slide is the downtown themes and goals. There's nothing in between.
Lost a map, which case I'll pull up a different slide.
No, there's not.
Sorry, sorry about this. Waiting for something to load. Okay. Think I have it here, so let me find a way to hear this. It is not liking this slide for some odd reason. Because you're probably seeing, are you seeing a blank, a blank screen?
Nothing is shared right now.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, like if all we have is the grid of people, no.
All right, it's telling me. Let me try one other thing here. Are you seeing a slide with a map? No, you're not. You're seeing mine. That's not working. Okay, um, let me do this. Trying to think if there's another way to hear this.
This is Tyler. I can help with that. I've got the slide up here.
Do you, would you like to, thank you, can you share that?
Yes.
All right. My boss to the rescue. This map that I'm going to, that Tyler is going to show you is a framework plan map. It's also in the draft plan that you received. This is going to tell us a little, this framework plan tells us a little about where we expect or where we hope to cite parks. And can you make that a little bigger? Okay, terrific, thank you. This still may be a little small to see. While he's working to see if we can make that bigger. When, this framework plan is not going to talk about specific site locations for, for new parks. We're not at that point yet. Rather, this framework plan fills us areas based on criteria listed in the plan where we think we need new parks, where THPRD will start pursuing new parks, locations for new parks. You'll see on this map, there's some existing, important existing things, like the loop is on there in red. We certainly have the creeks there, particularly Beaverton Creek, which is an important and the largest creek through downtown. We do show our retail and restaurant streets of Broadway and First Street. Those are important landmarks and connectors. When we think about new parks, one of the things we talk about in the plan is what kind of criteria we want to consider when we think about locating new parks. One important thing is what kinds of activities and uses do we, and land uses do we expect in downtown in the future? Several years ago, we finished up our downtown design project and followed that up with the new downtown development code requirements and regulations. We know that we've got our most intense and our most dense development near our transit centers. They're north of, north of Farmington Road. We also know that there's a lot of developable land there. We expect to see a lot of new development over time. We also know that that area, north end of downtown, is not well-served by parks currently. And we also know that just outside that study barrier, boundary, we have other residential developments there, more single-family oriented, that are in need of, of downtown parks. So these parks are serving not only the new development that we expect, but the existing development that exists on the edge and just outside of this boundary. For THPRD, the important thing for them in thinking about citing plans is twofold. One, they want to be where there are existing gaps. And I think we can agree that we have gaps all through downtown, particularly on the north end of downtown. Another important thing for them is they want to provide parks in a way that doesn't require people to cross major transportation barriers to get to them. So in their mind, that means, and we know we have several transportation barriers downtown. We talked about the loop and other things that we are doing to try to combat those and mitigate those transportation barriers. And if we are successful doing that, this framework plan may change a little bit. However, in a denser, a denser urban environment, you need a lot of parks. We're going to see more smaller parks and more frequent parks than you would see in a, in an area outside of downtown. So this, this map actually may not change very much, even if we are successful in mitigating our barriers. So as you see from these orange, big orange rings, those are areas, again, just approximate areas where we think it makes sense to try to locate parks. One of them or several of them, as you see, are located along the creek. We heard from the public, we also talked about this last time we talked about the plan with you, that there's a lot of interest in having physical and visual access to the creeks. Water is a big thing that people want to see in parks, whether it's access to the creek, whether it's splash pads, whether it's drinking fountains, that sort of thing. Water, water is, is pretty key. So if possible, it would be great to try to acquire land and place some parks along the, along the creek, to the extent possible. The other thing that we have on this map, we have shaded our bureau properties. When we purchase these bureau properties, we do not intend them to be purchased for parks. You know, we have, and, and we have created redevelopment strategy that will help guide us into development of these spaces. However, we could include smaller plazas, even develop privately owned public spaces along with our development of bureau properties. Also, it helps inform where we might locate larger parcels. We know that we're going to be developing our bureau property as dense urban, in dense urban development. So that can help inform, having parks nearby would be very beneficial. I think I will leave it at that. Or I think you can, let's move on to the next slide since I've got you. I'm not going to reiterate the discussion of themes and goals. We already talked about that. And if you've had a chance to dig in into the plan, you'll see, I think there's seventy or so actions that help support these. We know that we don't have a lot of time tonight to really get into maybe all the questions that you have about this plan, but we will be coming back to you in September and we will have, we will have time tonight to answer questions. We can also answer questions in September when we come back to you for final action. With that, Tyler, let's go to the last slide, which is, oh, next steps, yeah, scheduled. You have a draft plan that was given to you for your review. It's a draft. We are seeing some small changes we might want to make. We'll get some feedback from you and from bureau this month and finalize the plan in August so that you will have a final plan for, for review and action in September. And then we will also be going to THPRD for final action as well. I will open that up for questions. Tyler, thank you so much for, for helping out with that slideshow.
You work. All right, let's keep questions, comments to five minutes. Looks like we've got Mayor Beatty in the chat.
Thank you, and she's really chatty, so she has a lot of opinion about parks. I just want to say, I really like the direction we're going. In the ten years that I've been involved with the city, I feel like our relationship with THPRD is at an all-time high in collaboration, the staff working together with our policymakers, turning the, the same direction. So this is just an example of like this would have never happened five years ago. So I'm really glad to see that we are planning together for a Beaverton that we really want to see downtown. I'm aware too that we've asked our, our partners to come align with us when it comes to affordable housing and waiving SDCs. SDCs are how new parks are built. And the more affordable housing we put in our core, which is a goal, the more likely it's going to be challenging for THPRD to deliver new parks when we ask them to. So that's just something we need to think about as our forward agreement starts coming together. Because, you know, they're doing things like in lieu of building like at the Mary Ann, which is really great, but that's really hard for them to now accomplish another park in that same area since they've waived so many SDCs for that project. And we have the senior housing project coming online and a lot of other things. So it is something we need to be aware of when we're talking about wanting new parks and what we're doing and how we're going to backfill and make sure that those things can happen in a time that's appropriate. I'm really concerned about having more dog parks. The denser we become, it starts to become a public health issue to me when we don't have enough facilities for dogs to be able to relieve themselves. They end up going on the sidewalks that we're trying to build or the side of buildings and it just becomes a nuisance. And we know a lot of people that live in multifamily housing also have animals. So making sure we see a fair representation of what new dog parks or at least parts of parks dedicated to dogs. We don't have to have the entire park be a dog park, but more, more places for animals to relieve themselves is incredibly important to me. I have a lot to say on this topic, but I think for now, those were my two main thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Teeter.
Yeah, thank you, Sarah. Like the mayor, I've got a lot of thoughts, so I'll keep it to just a, a few shorter ones. But I've got a lot of thoughts because this is really exciting and it's good work, so thank you. The first is, well, most of my comments are related to the framework plan map on page fifty-seven that you shared. The, the dining comments isn't highlighted here that I can see, but I would love for us to consider highlighting it as a future park space because we've approved it for one more year of a budget, but we don't have a plan that's set for after that. So it's just a focus area for me. Another one is Lombard is shown on that map as a future Lombard gateway corridor. And I would love for us to, to look more at the Allen Boulevard, just, or the Allen, yeah, the Allen Boulevard District Plan. On the Allen Boulevard District Plan map, on page nineteen of it, we can, you can look at it later. But it actually shows a planned Beaverton Creek Trail that runs up from Lombard down through, down through King and the Allen neighborhood. So I would love to think more about how the Allen Boulevard District Plan intersects with our accessibility and the downtown parks and open space planning. And then my final comment is, there's a multi-use trail that runs from Third Street down to Tenth on the west side of downtown, right between the Swim Center and the high school, that I think is a really important access route into downtown. So I think just calling that out and thinking about how we can either highlight that as a great gateway into downtown or main because it's also another good slow street. That'd be great too.
I just want to point out that that trail is actually owned by the homeowners association of that condominium. So I think to just build on Kevin Teeter's point that there are some trails that exist that are not government-owned and that is one of them. And they are very particular about how things operate there. So it's important for us to think about it. But I agree, my mom lived there and so does Jim McCright, so make sure he knows. I use that spell quite often.
Okay, great, thank you. I didn't even know that.
Okay, and I just wanted to do a quick reminder that we are in presentation mode, not work session mode. We did have a chance to give our feedback on this plan last time Sarah and Gary came. So just to kind of keep us moving in on, on time, so Counselor Hassan.
Yes, just two comments or one, sorry, one question, one comment. The first question is around Beaverton High School. I know that they're not necessarily responsible for open parks and spaces, but just wondering like what we know of the construction that's happening in Beaverton High School and if any of that is informing some of this work.
Gary, I'm, Gary, is Gary still, yeah, there you are, Gary. I'm wondering if you can talk a little bit about the relationship that you have with Beaverton High School and if you know of how the new high school is going to, may, it may impact the agreements and relationship that you have.
Yeah, we've got a really good relationship with BSD. There's actually the trail that we just talked about that goes by the Beaverton Swim Center there that's on their property. We've done some coordination with them on that piece, but I wouldn't say, we have not had a lot of coordination on putting park-type amenities on the, on the high school. The, the school district, their high schools are used around the clock, it seems like, right? With sports and whatnot. So we don't, as far as I know, we don't get as many hours on their fields as we used to in the past. Most of the hours that we get are on the, like the middle school fields or the elementary school fields, which we have that agreement where we maintain them for them with the trade that we get to program them after school and on weekends. And so that's where most of our opportunity is with the school district. We also do some after-school work with them and their gymnasiums in the winters with basketball and whatnot. But as far as a Beaverton High School goes, we haven't had a ton of coordination on sharing spaces yet on that. But as far as Beaverton High School goes, we haven't had a ton of coordination on sharing spaces yet on that, but.
Okay, thank you. And I would just comment, right, like, I don't know how they're rebuilding. I know that they're coming to us soon. So it would, we, I would want that to help inform how we're doing, what we're doing. When I zoom out and look at this, like, what are there, like, because it's going to, it could be very drastically different in terms of where we put what we put, so just thinking we should also potentially be talking to them. This is a teeny tiny comment, it's just about, as we get closer into like the weeds of this project, which I know will be in a while, but thinking about what kind of spaces we can build that build community. And so like some of the like, like the, the run, the run around wheel, merry-go-round, like, what are the things that we can build that, that bring people together versus like keeping people apart? And so I just, I saw like that little one game and I was like, that's like, just again, way down the line, but I want to say it now so that it's heard and on record, so thank you.
Thank you, and Counselor Tipnan.
Thank you, again echoing with other counselors who've said this is all very, very exciting. And the only thing I wanted to point out is being, what I, sorry. What I think to be a really good opportunity here is to activate the Bureau parcels that we have acquired that are sitting there empty and might be empty for a while as we prepare the sites, look for the right partners to develop those. Seems like we've got some opportunities to activate them and do some really interesting stuff with those. So I hope that that's somehow reflected in, in this work and, and gives us some options down the road or things to think about.
Thank you. Sarah, Gary, anything else? Any closing comments or questions for us?
Good questions and comments, thank you. Thank you very much for your time. I know, I know you have a very, very busy day, so we appreciate, or night, so we appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you so much for the great work. We, I think, are maybe a natural pause point to take a quick five minute break before we get into another meaty part of our agenda. We still have about ninety minutes of scheduled public hearing and work sessions together. So if we could take a five minute break, come back at eight seventeen, I think that would be good to get us going for the rest of the night. Sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
I was just going to say, could the Bureau chair aid in the public hearing with the council president? And I've got a lot of my hands, and that way we don't miss anything, that would be helpful.
I'll make sure you have the script, Counselor Tipnan.
Thank you.
We are now going to hold a public hearing on an ordinance amending the Beaverton Development Code. So this is the time and place for a public hearing on an ordinance amending the Beaverton Development Code relating to the Parking Policy and Code Project TA two zero two three dash zero zero one. I now call to order the public hearing. Before we move to the substance of the hearing, I will ask the city attorney to cover some preliminary matters.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Robin McIntyre, Assistant City Attorney. Tonight's hearing will proceed as follows. After preliminary legal matters, staff will make a presentation. The council will have an opportunity to ask questions, then council will hear public testimony. After the council asks any final questions of staff, the hearing will be closed and the council will discuss the proposal and make a decision. Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. If you've joined the meeting by phone, you can enter star nine to let the city recorder know you wish to speak. Alternatively, if you've joined this meeting online, you can let the city recorder know you wish to speak by clicking on the raise hand feature. Each member of the public will have up to three minutes to speak. When you speak, please give your name and city of residence for the record. Now I will explain the criteria the council must use to make its decision tonight, and I will ask the members of the council if they wish, wish to make any disclosures. Council's decision on the adoption of the ordinance must be based on consideration of, first, the statewide planning goals and administrative rules adopted under Oregon Revised Statutes, Chapter one ninety-seven, any applicable federal or state statutes or rules, applicable plans and rules adopted by Metro, and finally, the city's comprehensive plan and development code. The council may consider any relevant testimony that it receives. Failure to raise an issue during the city's hearing on this ordinance precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Any party withstanding may appeal the decision of the city council to the State Land Use Board of Appeals according to the rules adopted by that board. Persons withstanding include those who submit written comments or present oral comments. So at this time, I'd like to ask if any members of the council wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest. He let the record show there were no responses. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the ability of any member of the council to participate in this decision? Okay, let the record show there are no responses.
Thank you. Let's proceed to the staff presentation.
Great, one moment while I share my screen. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jenna Hughes. I'm an associate planner with the Community Development Department. I am also joined tonight by, by Brian Martin, Long Range Planning Manager. The proposal before you tonight is the Parking Policy and Code Project Text Amendment TA twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 one. The city is the applicant. In your materials, you should have Exhibit A, the Planning Commission Recommended Development Code Amendments, Exhibit B, Staff Recommended Changes to the Planning Commission Recommendation, Exhibit C, a staff report dated February twenty-second, as well as additional materials including public comments and the land use order in minutes from the Planning Commission hearing. The options for deliberation and decision include, one, approve the Planning Commission Recommendation with the modifications in Exhibit B, and two, other action including modifying the text amendment or B, denying the text amendment. If council does not adopt Development Code Amendments by the end of this year, state rules will apply directly to the city rather than through the city's preferred approach to compliance. This text amendment is a direct response to newly amended Oregon Administrative Rules, which are the climate-friendly and equitable communities rules, which we are required to comply with by the end of this year. The state rules include requiring us to reduce or eliminate minimum parking requirements and update parking maximums in areas near frequent transit and in regional and town centers for certain uses listed on this slide. We must also require specific design elements for developments that add large parking lots. And in November of last year, Beaverton's City Council gave staff direction to remove all parking minimums citywide and proceed with updating the code to comply with all other state requirements. As described in Exhibit B in your packet, at the March first Planning Commission hearing, the commission voted to recommend approval of the proposed text amendment, but asked staff to do some additional work on three topics and bring recommendations to city council. They include, one, whether to, to lower the state required threshold for when a parking lot addition triggers requirements regarding tree canopy and parking lot design elements; two, revisions to the tree canopy requirement section to better accommodate school buses and public safety vehicles; and three, revisions to the tree canopy calculations that would make it easier to meet the minimum tree canopy percentage standard. So over a month after the Planning Commission hearing, the state adopted temporary amendments to the climate-friendly rules that took effect May twelfth and addressed some of the concerns that we heard from both the Planning Commission and the public. These changes include raising the threshold from a quarter acre to a half acre for when those requirements for large parking lots apply, reducing the minimum tree canopy coverage for new parking lot areas, and adding clarification to the solar panel option and continuous canopy requirements, as well as adding an option for people to provide thirty percent tree canopy instead of providing trees and sidewalks along driveways. Staff is recommending changes to the Development Code Amendments to incorporate these updated requirements described in Exhibit B. And these temporary rule amendments are scheduled to be permanently adopted in November and are not expected to change drastically from these temporary rule amendments. Consistent with state rules, the recommended code changes adjust the minimums and maximums for surface parking as described on this slide. And with the modification of Exhibit B, if a development is adding more than a half acre of surface parking, they must provide trees and sidewalks along driveways or thirty percent tree canopy and have one of the following on site: solar panels, a green public building, or a tree canopy that shades at least forty percent of the new parking area. Exhibit B also includes additional recommendations for how to measure tree canopy and parking lot area intended to make the requirements clearer and easier to implement. New multi-dwelling buildings with five or more units must provide electric vehicle charging capacity to forty percent of residential parking spaces on the property. Developers would be required to provide, would not be provide, required to provide the actual charging station, just the conduit system so that charging stations could be installed in the future. And this rule already took effect May, March thirtieth, and we've been applying this rule directly. This would just ensure that our code is in alignment with the state rule. Chapters forty, fifty, and ninety involve more administrative changes to support the changes in chapter sixty. The recommended changes are listed on this slide. And staff finds that the proposed amendment meets all applicable approval criteria. You all have received also an updated ordinance with language that reflects the recommended council action, and that language is on this slide. So the options for deliberation again are, one, approve the Planning Commission Recommendation Exhibit A with the modifications in Exhibit B, and two, other, other action including modifying the text amendment or denying the text amendment. And again, if council does not adopt the Development Code changes by December thirty-first, state rules will apply directly to the city rather than through the city's preferred approach. So that concludes staff presentation. Staff recommends that the council conduct a public hearing and receive all public testimony as described on this slide and approve TA twenty twenty-three dash zero 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 one Parking Policy and Code Project Text Amendment and move to modify the Planning Commission Recommendation with the staff recommended changes described in Exhibit B. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Are there any questions of staff? Mayor.
Thank you. For the code amendment for adding the forty percent, the conduits for electric charging vehicles, I'm a big fan. Would these conduits be sufficient for a microgrid?
Um, I don't know the answer to that. Brian, do you happen to know?
Hi, Brian Martin, Long Range Planning Manager. I don't know the answer to that question either, but we can certainly research it and get back to everybody on that.
Okay, because my concern is that the conduits are going to be from like point A to point B for like the charging. But if we were going to be looking at micro grids, which is a big part of the Inflation Reduction Act, I would want to make sure that our code would, if we're going to require the, if we're going to require it for that, how much more work would it be to, to have the conduits go all the way to the roof for a microgrid? So I don't want to hold up today's passage of it. But if it doesn't, where, what, like, what would my next steps be?
Sure, Mayor, we can look into that after this and, and see where it falls in the priorities for future code amendments. Thanks.
Counselor Tucker.
Yeah, a question for you on the forty percent canopy for new parking lots, the forty percent coverage requirement. How is that calculated? And I'm thinking, you know, it's easy to think about parking lots right now, like with big trees, right? But tree canopy changes over time. So is it calculated based on the future tree projection of how much canopy? Or is that going to require a lot more trees to be planted in the parking lot? Help me understand the calculation there, what the, what the state is thinking. That makes the question?
Sorry?
I, I just, I, I want to make sure I ask the question in a way that makes sense.
Yeah, thanks, Counselor, for the question. I think I, I think I understand it. But I, unfortunately, I don't know if I can answer, give you the answer that you're looking for. We mainly just relied on the state's calculation for our, to implement into our code. So I'm not sure exactly how they calculated that forty percent number. But it will require that whenever there's a new parking lot addition, a lot more trees are going to need to be planted and parking lots are going to need to look a lot different from how they typically look.
Counselor, I'd like to add to that. At least the way the code is going to work, as far as how we calculate whether somebody met that standard, it's really the canopy of the tree at fifteen years, so it's imagining the future canopy. And there probably will be, need to be more trees planted than, than your average parking lot today to meet that. But that's the basic, how the math works.
Okay. Okay, I think that answered, okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Teeter.
I've got, I've got, I think I've got two questions. The, the first is related to the fifteen hundred dollar fee. If people don't want to, don't want to pay for solar panels and they want to pay the fifteen hundred dollar fee into a city or county fund or some other recipient, do we have flexibility to just say that fifteen hundred dollars will go to the city for some climate fund of our own?
Um, yeah, thanks, thanks, Counselor, for that question. I'd have to look again at the, the language of the rule. I think the thinking behind this is that we don't currently have a fund set up, and so we didn't want to put language in our code that talks about a fund that doesn't yet exist. So we, we just, that's the reason why we didn't set that up for ourselves. But I'd have to check again on, on the rules, if that's something that we could modify in the future, if we do end up setting up a fund in the future.
Okay, I think, right now, I'm imagining if it came to the city, it feels like a natural spot would be our urban forestry efforts. But I don't know enough about their own programming and how that would affect them, or even if they'd be ready for, for that sort of thing. Jenny, I don't know if you have thoughts on that one, if the urban forestry could take the fee in lieu and use that for some of their programs.
I probably couldn't answer that right now.
Okay, okay. So maybe this is a future note, if people are building parking lots in Beaverton, I want us to be able to get the money so that we can do our own climate projects. And then the second question is, and if this isn't the right time for it, you can let me know. There was a comment about a modification of decisions for developments that have already been approved for a required minimum amount of parking and, and seeing if we can just eliminate the minimum requirements for developments that are in the development process. Does that make sense? Can we do that? Or since they've already had the, or since they've already had the... Um, permits approved or decisions approved, they'd have to get the modification. Of a decision.
Um, could you repeat that?
Okay.
Uh, sorry, Counselor, I think, I think I got your drift.
Thanks.
Folks who have submitted application have to comply with the standards that were in place at the time of the application. And we did try to let folks know that this was coming so they could wait if they wanted to, but some folks just couldn't wait to submit their application. So they, I believe they'd have to go through the modification.
Okay, and there's no way, there's no way that could be expedited or just removed? Like, can we change the rule or is that? Outset of our boundary?
I don't think we can change the rule tonight, so, um, we'll just have to kind of, oh, sorry, Anna, go ahead.
I'm just gonna jump in here, um, Anna Slatinsky, Planning Division Manager. Um, that's actually a rule that come from state law. Um, it's, it's called colloquially the goalpost rule, and it's basically a protection so that. Um, if rules change partway through the permitting process. It doesn't create an untenable situation for applicants. And so it's, it's, uh, it's something that we could not change. Um, uh, as the city alone, uh, it is a requirement, um, in state law.
Okay, perfect. That helps. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Awesome. Are there any further counselor questions? Okay, seeing none, um, City Recorder, is there anyone wishing to speak tonight?
I have one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Kimmy, go ahead.
Uh, just quick question regards to the, uh. Multi-dwelling unit requirement for forty percent of electrical service capacity. I know there's a Cooper Mountain developments and South Cooper Mountain happening right now, and, and many of them are multi-dwelling units. Uh, I don't know if they're required to provide forty percent. Uh, conduits, um, but the question I have is, um. Multi-dwelling unit. Folks need more parking, in my. Opinion. And what is our parking law regards to person who's not a, who doesn't have the electrical charging vehicle, parking electrical charging station? Because if we have a shortage of the parking already, and there's no minimum parking requirement. And if, if the, many of the parking spaces are electrical charging parking. Then, uh, I am worried about the people who doesn't have those cars, which requires. Expensive funds to buy. So what is the current code? If you don't have one, do you have a plan to address those issues?
Uh, thank you, counselor for that question. Um, even. I guess I'd start by saying that, um, while we are removing, um, minimum parking requirements. Um, we very much know that parking is not going away and developers will still build. Parking and hopefully adequate parking for the needs of their residents. And so it's more just open to, um, you know, what the market is, um. You know, needs. And I think, you know, this is where we're gonna need other transportation and transit options. Outside of this project, outside of the code, um, and we're just gonna need to have, um. More of a holistic approach to ensuring better transportation options for people who may not have cars. Or, um, may choose to not have a car. And I don't know if Brian or Anna had any additional, uh, comments.
The, there's just a reason I'm asking this question because, um. Right now in downtown area, there's shortage of parking, and it's always seems like. Either the electric charging vehicles are parked all day charging. Or it's empty and you cannot park there, even though you cannot find parking. So I'm trying to adjust those issue if, if, uh, our city has any plan to address that in the future.
Uh, Counsel Kimmy, again, this is Brian Martin, Long Range Planning Manager. The best answer I can give you is probably a partial answer, and I think because these are private parking lots we're talking about, uh, regulating on this project. If they have conduit and charging stations to a certain percentage of their lot, it's gonna be up to them. How they wanna manage those, whether other people park there or not. And, um, anything else would be sort of. You know, future projects to like update our city's parking. Uh, approach and understand, you know, who can use those spaces when, but outside the scope of this, of tonight, of course.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any further counselor questions? Okay, seeing none, City Recorder, is there anyone wishing to speak tonight?
No, Council President, there is not.
Thank you. There appears to be no member of the public who wants to speak on this matter tonight. Does any member of the council have any additional questions for staff? Okay, um, does staff have any further comments or clarification regarding the proposed, uh, legislation?
Uh, I don't have any comments.
Okay, thank you, Jenna. Okay, hearing no for the questions from the council, the public hearing is now closed. The council may either adopt the proposed ordinance with the amendment recommended by staff or take other action. But if other action is proposed, the motion must include specific direction as to what the other action is. Is there a motion regarding the ordinance?
Sorry, I had it covering my mute button.
Okay.
Council President, I move that the council adopt the city ordinance embodied in Agenda Bill two, three, one, five, five. An ordinance amending the Beaverton Development Code relating to the Parking Policy and Code Project. TA two, zero, two, three, dash, zero, 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 one. With section one amended to read in its entirety. Section one amendment, the Beaverton Development Code is amended as set forth in exhibit A as amended by exhibit B. Both of which are attached and incorporated by this reference.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved by Counsel Tivnan and seconded by Counsel Duggar. To, um, is there any discussion on the motion? Counsel Teeter.
Um. I've got a potential amendment. Planning Commission, I wanna see how you all feel about it. Um, Planning Commission made the motion to reduce the parking maximums from one point two to one point zero for, for studios. And then, um, two point O to one point five for other units. Um, three out of the seven Planning Commission members supported that. So it wasn't a majority, but I like that. I wanna bring that back up for conversation. Um, I don't have that wording of Food Planning Commission front end. But I would like to make an amendment. That would have the language from that Planning Commission motion. I'm sorry, I'm jumping this all up.
Point of order, if this isn't, you can't do that. We have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, we would have to vote on the motion on the floor, um, at this point, so.
Okay.
Too late to make an additional amendment to it.
Okay.
Um, so we will need to move forward with the motion on the table and go to a vote first.
Okay.
Are there any further comments on the motion? Okay, we are ready for a vote on the ordinance adoption. Would the City Recorder please, uh, take the vote by roll call?
Counsel Tivnan.
Yes.
Hart Meyer Prigg.
Yes.
Kimmy.
Yes.
Duggar.
Yes.
Teeter.
Yes.
Hassan.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted seven, zero.
Okay, thank you. Um. That is the end of our public hearing, so we will actually move on to the next agenda item. Okay, um, Mayor, are you comfortable with me continuing on?
Yeah, please. I, I need some help tonight. Thanks.
Yep, no problem, no problem. Okay, um, so our next agenda item is a first reading. Let me just open this so I can read the exact language. This is a one-page agenda bill, and my computer is crawling to open it. I'm sorry. Okay. Um. On September fifth, two thousand twenty-three, during the regularly scheduled city council meeting, a public hearing will be held regarding. An ordinance amending the Beaverton Comprehensive Plan relating to the Housing Needs Analysis. LU four, two, zero, two, three, dash, zero, zero, two, seven, two, four, seven. Slash CPTA four, two, zero, two, three, zero, zero, two, four, five. Okay, our next agenda item tonight is the Cooper Mountain Community Plan. This is our first work session of the evening. Um, Rob and Brian, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Hey, good evening, Mayor Beatty and counselors. I am Rob Zeller, a senior planner with the City's Planning Division. And in addition to Brian Martin, I'm also joined by, um, Anna Slatinsky, Planning Division Manager. And Alyssa Maxwell, Capital Planning Projects Manager. I'm here tonight to provide an update, um, provide an overview of the draft concept map, goals, and policies for the Cooper Mountain Community Plan. Just exhibit one in your packet. We have three questions. Do you support the proposed changes to the Concept Plan Map? Do you have any comments about the proposed community plan document? And do you have any questions or comments about the project process or next steps? This map shows the twelve hundred acre project area. The area is anticipated to provide about five thousand homes, which includes a mix of single detached homes, middle housing, and multi-dwellings. The intent of the community plan is to provide a blueprint for how future neighborhoods will develop in Cooper Mountain. For example, where will new homes be allowed and how will we protect natural resources? The goals and policies currently cover eight categories that address topics such as housing, natural resources, and transportation. Collectively, these goals and policies will help us create new equitable neighborhoods, protect natural resources. And provide safe and convenient access to parks and other destinations in Cooper Mountain. The concept map shows different land uses, densities, and desired outcomes based on the preferred approach reviewed by council last year. These outcomes are informed by three years of public engagement, equity analysis, and more than ten work sessions with city council. Uh, this concept map is the council's vision for Cooper Mountain. Commercial uses, parks, and higher density residential uses are grouped in some locations to create centers of activity. On this map. Yellow. It's residential mixed. This is intended for single detached dwellings, townhouses, cottage clusters, and complexes with up to six units. And the bluish green. Is, represents the significant natural resources overlay or SNR, SNRA overlay. An overlay is an additional map layer that applies special rules in addition to the requirements of the base zoning district. All land under the green overlay would still be zoned as residential mixed, which again is this yellow. The SNRA overlay indicates that some development may be allowed, but will be more limited than outside the overlay. The road and trail network shown on this map is intended to connect neighborhoods to important destinations. Since this is a concept map, the road alignments are conceptual and would be refined through detailed engineering work. We also developed this map with flexibility in mind, which will be further developed through our zoning approach. This spring, we shared the concept map with the community. We received many comments from service providers, property owners, and the wider community. The most common are described in exhibit three of your packet. In response to these comments and ongoing analysis, staff recommends four changes to the concept map, which are described in exhibit two. First, consolidating apartment areas. These are the orange spots on the map. Into fewer but larger areas, such as here, to improve development feasibility. Even with this change, we would still evenly disperse apartment areas and promote access to natural areas for all residents. Second is updating the parks approach in two places. First, moving the two acre park in the Hilltop Neighborhood to the northwest corner of the McKernan Neighborhood. And second, removing the two acre park in the High Hill Neighborhood. And indicating that it might be better for a small nature park in this general vicinity. Third is labeling the areas around two commercial locations as neighborhood centers. These are the red boxes on your map, um, to convey what the city intends to accomplish with the zoning map and development rules. While acknowledging that there are still some things that we need to be working. So taking a less precise approach, uh, might be more sensible at this stage. And fourth is modifying the transportation network to include. Refinements to the alignment of neighborhood routes. These are the blue dots on the map. Um, and also the addition of new neighborhood routes to fill in some gaps in the network. In terms of next steps. This summer, staff is drafting development rules. This includes things like tree protection rules that apply inside and outside significant natural resource areas. And SNRA rules that protect the ecological health of natural resources. Indicate what activities may be allowed in SNRAs. And establish a method for reviewing SNRA boundary amendments. This fall, we plan to host public engagement events where people can share their thoughts on the draft code. We also will be working on the funding plan that will provide options for how to pay for new roads and utilities. In January, we hold a work session for council to review the draft code. Barring any delays, we could start the adoption process this spring. And adopt comprehensive plan updates, development code updates, and the funding plan in late spring. And that brings us to the discussion questions. With our remaining time. We'd like to hear from council on whether you support the proposed changes to the Concept Plan Map. Um, or have any comments about the community plan, and also do you have any questions or comments about the project process or?
Thank you so much, Rob. Um, council, who would like to get us started with any questions or to give feedback on the questions Rob proposed?
Counsel President, can you have them put the questions back up?
Sure.
Please, thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
True.
All right, Counsel Duggar, thank you.
Hi, Rob. Thanks for listening to the staff. I have a couple of questions. Um, and I think I've asked this before, uh, but I wanna kind of pu- put it out in the public. Is there a way? Particularly for those, the, the, the kinda non-apartment residential zones, so the, the, the primary. Zoned area for, or the designated area for housing. Um, is there a way to require a certain amount of the land be dedicated to? That, that kinda missing middle that you said is allowed, right? The cottage clusters, the, the six plaxis, things like that, but. In general, the market is not delivering right now, uh, and I understand there's, there's lots of reasons why, but is there a fundam-? Is there a way we can incent that or require a certain percentage amount, uh, of, of the land to do that?
Uh, actually, this summer, when we're working on the code updates, we are looking at requirements. For middle housing in different areas. Uh, this would be different than what we've seen in the city, um, you know, where, like you said, it was simply allowed. Now there would be, you know, geographic requirements. Um, we're still working on the rules, but it would be a way of requiring a certain. Number of housing types and a mix of housing in each neighborhood, so it's, it's not concentrated or clustered in certain areas.
Okay, perfect. And then I have one more question, and then I'll answer your three questions. So you, you talked about there's, there's gonna be some planning for roadway, uh, funding and, and street networks and all the infrastructure. Um, is there a way to incorporate, uh, into that planning, library funding, capital funding for a library out there? Uh, or, uh, any, any sort of thing like that? That might be a conversation on STCs or something, but I just wanted to. Since we're talking specifically about this area and that. We, we've just recently obviously had some difficult discussions on the library out there. Wanted to, I'm just thinking long-term about that. Is infrastructure?
Well, Alyssa, uh, Alyssa is leading our funding plan work, so I think this would be a great opportunity for her. a great opportunity for her to introduce herself if you have not met her already.
I've tried to promote her several times. I just need her to accept it.
Okay.
Hi, council and mayor. Yes, my name is Alyssa Maxwell and I'm a Capital Planning Project Manager and working on the funding plan. To answer your question, we thus far have not been looking at strategies around library funding, but we can investigate whether that's something that should be considered or could be considered for the funding plan.
I mean, I don't know how other councillors feel. I I would be open to that, at least including it in the discussion to see what that would look like. I think would be a healthy, healthy conversation to have.
I'm fairly certain we cannot use STCs that way, so we probably need a little interpretation on that. Like, just consider it infrastructure? Does it mean that it's going to fall under the state?
Fair enough.
Ability, but if you could add that legal question from the city attorney when you bring it back, that would be helpful.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Let me answer your three questions. I do support the proposed changes. I think a lot of makes sense and it was really helpful to go out and and tour the area and look at that. So that was really helpful. I do have a little bit of concern around the amount of commercial space. And I know the needs analysis said that, you know, that what we were planning for is sufficient. But when I look at the commercial vacancy rate right now in Beaverton, you know, it's so incredibly low. I know people that can't start businesses here that want commercial space. And we have an opportunity to add more and I just wonder if the analysis is looking at neighborhoods specifically or like is more, you know, citywide? And in general, I know it's really difficult to get funding, so that kind of gives me a little pause on are we including enough? Just, you know, because a lot of these spaces might serve beyond the neighborhood. But otherwise, I think this is a good step forward and I'm excited to see the work and I appreciate the work on it.
All right, and Councilor Tipton?
Thank you. Yeah, a quick clarifying question. Can you, can you talk more about the distinction between commercial space and neighborhood centers and why? What's the rationale behind changing a couple of them to that designation?
Well, for now, I think it's important to communicate that this is a conceptual map. And so we're trying to express desired outcomes, not create the land use map or the zoning map. And so it's a way of just saying, we're still looking at this area. But as we look at the land use map, things would become more fixed and we would see if we might want to, you know, have a certain zoning near certain intersections show commercial would be required there. This would not be a long-term designation. It's a way for us to, you know, communicate a general outcome and keep working on it.
Counselor, it's Brian Martin, Long Range Planning Manager. I just wanted to add that we also are trying to be responsive to comments we heard from property owners and community members who didn't think the sort of little blobs we were showing were very feasible. The sort of, you know, the apartment areas are too small and the commercial area might be in the wrong place. So we instead just put those boxes on there to say, all those elements are going to be included, but we're going to do further study on what the actual zoning map looks like and what the development rules are.
Okay. Yeah, I want to be really sensitive around this particular topic because I know that for the property owners out there, there's realities around development and some things get developed faster than others and commercial is one that tends to be very hard to predict and very much tied to forces that we have no control over. And to Councilor Dugger's point, I completely agree. I'm concerned about the commercial set-asides, I guess you call it. Where we're trying to eyeball, where to put it, how much of it to have. I think one of the biggest frustrations that I have with conversations that we have about transitioning more people out of their cars and into transit or to just make it so that they don't have to travel as much is that a lot of the trips people take are to shop and go get errands done and visit the doctor and dentist and whatnot. And this is an area that, excuse me, already has some challenges topographically with hills and we're going to, we're going to be challenged at incentivizing people to not use motorized transportation to get to where they need to go. And if it ends up being heavily weighted towards housing without enough commercial space mixed in, I'm afraid that we're basically canceling out a rationale for for that. And so that is, that is something, I think I've mentioned it before. I know that this is probably the trickiest part of any urban growth boundary expansion is figuring this part out because of the incentives for property owners or, or lack thereof, depending on how we zone it. So it sounds to me like what you're saying is that by, by changing the distinction of this, we're just giving ourselves a little bit more runway for market forces to, and conversations with developers and reading the tea leaves on what needs there are out there and the business community and their interest. And so is that, I mean, I, I don't know if you can answer to that, but that's, that's the thing that came to mind tonight. So if you have any comments to that right now, great. I'd love to hear them. Otherwise, I'm just going to throw that out there in the ether for people to think about.
Yeah, just, just real briefly, counselor. It does give us, give us more time. We'll come out with a draft zoning map and the development rules about how much commercial is required and allowed this fall and everybody had a chance to comment on them. We have a chance to iterate on that. The other thing that you will see is the basic idea that we're going to explore is require a minimum amount of commercial in a couple of key locations. Allow more. That way the developers and the property owners can decide like what their read of the market, if they want to provide more, they can provide more. And we also have, we're working on a concept where we would allow some small scale commercial units within those yellow residential mixed areas. So you might have a corner store or people in office, small office building about the size of a house in a residential neighborhood. So it just provides more opportunities for things to be closer.
Yeah, yeah. Well, there's an area by John's Landing down in the South Waterfront above it a little bit called the Ross Island Grocery. That's just this little kind of a catch-all store in the, in the middle of a residential neighborhood and it's always got people outside of it. It's a wonderful gathering place. There's lots of pockets like that around Portland and not as many in the surrounding cities. I'd love it if we could encourage that in our neighborhoods because I think it really does encourage people to get out of their homes and, and commune with each other. As far as the questions go, I'm in general support of the proposed changes. I do think as far as just comments go, it's really reflective of the fact that we're listening to folks that are reaching out, especially to property owners, that this is going to so deeply impact them, their, their personal family generational wealth of this land that they've, they've had. And what this means for them personally, I know this is very personal to them. And it, from the comments we heard during public testimony, from, from what I gather, they're feeling heard, they're feeling supported by city staff in these conversations and included in them. And I think that's, that's, that's a promise that we make as councillors when we run for office is that we're going to be advocates of that. And so I'm really happy to see that that's the level of rigor in input that we're getting. So I'm very happy about that and, and feel that the changes that have been made here are responsive and also responsive to council feedback you've been getting about our priorities. So general support. Thank you.
Great. Counselor Hassan? Did we lose Counselor Hassan? Oh, okay. Wi-Fi issues again. If you're able to get back on Counselor Hassan and want to chime in, please let me know. I'll go and then Counselor Kimmy.
I really do support these changes. I like the flexibility of defining these neighborhood centers and also allowing for it to be what it needs to be and in terms of like what's feasible and not just kind of saying early on, it's going to have this and this. Like, we know the elements and the components that we want to see in those neighborhood centers. I also am excited about that community making element that comes there. I was reading something recently about, you know, these more mixed-use neighborhoods are helpful to Counselor Tipton's point in actually creating like that community space and creating that kind of identity. And I do feel like this is an opportunity to create identity and I think a big part of the identity of this area is going to be that we're also stewards of this natural space. And so I'm grateful to see the balance of a lot of different inputs into this plan. I know one thing that council was pretty adamant about was to really be intentional with where the roads were placed and protecting wildlife crossings. And I'm grateful to see that that is continuing through as we move forward with the community plan. So generally, those are just my kind of, my thoughts, but I'm also supportive. I think I just have one question and it is tied a little bit to Cooper Mountain. But Rob, on the map where there's kind of like the, the black dotted line that cuts the Cooper Mountain, like at the top of the Cooper Mountain Nature Park, yeah, and then above that you see North Cooper Mountain. Is that all unincorporated Washington County? Is that also outside of UGB? Or what is that kind of part of the map that I'm assuming is not Beaverton?
The part just north of Kemmer?
No, this part like near your, your arrow where it says North Cooper Mountain. Is that, is that outside of future proposed city of Beaverton too? Like that, that areas can continue to be unincorporated Washington County?
I haven't looked at the boundary. Brian, have you looked at the?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is, it is currently inside the urban growth boundary and in unincorporated Washington County. As you know, we haven't completely tied up our urban service area, which will be the future area we annex like in the long future.
Yeah.
But we anticipate this would be a part of it. And it was part of the original Cooper Mountain Concept Plan, we did all three together. So it's just a, you know, Cooper first, get the infrastructure in and then we can think about North Cooper after that.
Yeah, no, I think that's great. And I think that, you know, our perspective from the city is to kind of set up, right, the zoning to both allow us to be ready for these commercial centers for as much housing to meet our goals as well as to protect that natural space. The SNRA is something I'm really excited about and I think it balances our priorities. But it seems like in terms of, and I know Mayor also called this out, that, you know, THPRD is going to really need to be a driver in terms of the conversation of that Cooper Mountain expansion for the nature park. And I guess for me, it also feels like there's natural expansion up there, right? So like, it's just something I'm thinking as I look at this map that, you know, we know there's going to be areas near the creek, the McKernan Creek that we aren't going to develop. We need to protect that space, but I just am seeing that and thinking, friends of Cooper Mountain, don't forget about that up there too. So yeah, very supportive of where the Community Plan is going and thank you for the responsiveness to the community as a whole, as well as just the priorities of kind of this, looking to the future of what could this neighborhood be like in Beaverton. Counselor Kimmy and then Counselor Hassan, if you'd like to chime in, we'll come back to you after Kimmy.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I do support the Concept Plan Map and I do appreciate your incorporating our feedback. I see the commission zoning now has moved down a little bit from the roundabout. That's great. One comment I have is we will have a lot of young families here in the future, kindergartners all the way up to high schoolers. It's right next to Mountainside High School and there's elementary schools that's going in nearby neighborhoods. But there seems like there's no park with play structure or sport courts, no basketball court, tennis court, anywhere for young adults to enjoy themselves, but a lot of trails. So in the future, when you talk to THPRD or how you develop the parks, hopefully you can incorporate some sports parks where people can play tennis, basketball or or pickleball, whatever that might be, for all the neighborhoods to use. I know you're incorporating a lot of nature park, but those are like small grassy area with a picnic table. So that's my comment. I don't know what your thinking is, but I do support all the plan that you have.
THPRD owns property up there that's not the nature park. They bought ahead of our expansion, just like the school did.
Oh, do you know where?
No, I just know they did. Maybe Ashley does. It's from her time on the board.
No.
Reason I mention this, you know, as a resident, we cannot access the Mountainside Park because of maintenance issues. And they have tons of sport court that residents cannot access after school hours. So any smaller, that would be my feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm just, I have a parks plan up here that we've been looking at trying to track other developments. This is pretty informal, but you know, we've, we've heard what you've had to say about sports plazas and next time we meet you to THPRD, I'm going to inquire more about their parks design process and when they start to consider things like that.
Thank you. Counselor Hassan?
Yes, thank you. I need to talk to my Wi-Fi provider because this is the second Tuesday of inconsistent Wi-Fi support that I've had. Just want to shout out all the work that you all are doing. You're at, like 16 people are asking for 16 different things and I think you're doing a really great job, so I support everything. I just, it was more a comment and then a question. I will continue to kind of be watching for and looking for how we're connecting roads there. I think we've got a good plan, but it's just something that like kind of sits with me when I was talking to someone about Cooper Mountain. They're like, oh, the traffic. And I was like, yeah, yeah, we've got excellent people on it. My, that's the comment. And then my question, I know that the timeline says drafting a funding plan. Can you help me understand? And maybe this is more of a, I'm not a rookie councillor, but I'm going to play the rookie councillor card. Like, what does a draft funding plan look like? Like, where do we, what does that mean?
I think Alyssa knows I'm going to ask her to cover that one.
Thank you.
Yes, I can speak to that. Thank you for that question. Yeah, we are well in the process of working on the funding plan. So it, you will start to see it in the fall and start talking about ideas there. The funding plan will be looking at, at this time, transportation, trails, parks and then our infrastructure, utility infrastructure that the city provides and looking at how existing funding processes would be able to pay for those different pieces of infrastructure, identifying where the gaps are, identifying which portions of those would be private development obligations and then looking against those gaps and finding opportunities to partner or look at new funding sources. We've already started working on, done some early studies to define those costs for the different infrastructure pieces, particularly the larger transportation elements that we know are going to need to be addressed as part of the plan. So when we are working on, when we bring those questions to work session, we'll be talking about potential strategies and scenarios and trying to figure out with you all what your priorities are and how we might, you know, whether it's working with other partner agencies or coming up with some innovative approaches to fill those funding gaps for those big pieces.
Awesome. Thank you very much. All right, Mayor Beatty.
Thank you. I do support this plan. I think that this is a long time to get here with a lot of what we've asked you to do and accomplish. And I think about what is our role as the city council and we're doing this kind of planning, which is unique. The only planning like this that we've done in a long time with South Cooper Mountain. So designing a community from the ground up is no easy task. But does our zoning allow for what we want to be there, right? That's the way that I look at it. Would it allow for Cooper Mountain Nature Park to expand? Absolutely. Would it allow for commercial space? Absolutely. Is it exactly how I would want it? Would it allow for commercial space? Absolutely. Is it exactly how I would want it to be? Or do do I wanna get in the nitty-gritty of where a stop sign should be and what kind of commercial should be there, basketball courts in particular parks? I mean, yeah, I'd like to because I have opinions about everything. But what's being asked about us tonight is like, is the zoning going to allow the community that we want? And I think it is. I think we hit the right spot here with what we wanna do. I agree. I would like to see more commercial, you know, um. But I guess the question for us is how are we gonna incentivize more commercial to be built? Because I feel like there's probably enough, the zoning would allow for enough of it. It's how are we gonna get people up there to do it? And I think that's gonna be the phase two part of what the council needs to decide and do. We know coming out of our budget uh crisis we have just been in that we need more commercial spaces across the city uh to balance out how much residential and multifamily units we have here. So I'm in it uh with Council Tipnan and Council Duggar to figure out an incentivization uh incentivizing a package to get more commercial into this area. Uh, but I think the plan will allow a sufficient amount, at least the way that I'm looking at it. So thank you uh for the hard work on it. And I wanna tell you, Rob, my kid cried the entire meeting until you started talking and your voice put her to sleep. So very soothing. I appreciate it.
Council Dieter?
I have two questions or one question, one comment. Um, can you talk more about the new neighborhood route addition right over Horse Tail? The one right in the middle.
Brian, do you mind taking the neighborhood route one?
Sure. Uh, there is an existing road in South Cooper Mountain that points right up uh into that area. So it's really just a continuation of that road to connect to the collector. And it curves kind of funny like that because of the slopes and where uh a reasonable place, a safe place for a local intersection is. I know there was a some some written testimony about that, and uh the specific spot where that hits will depend on the actual location of the future reservoir and some engineering work, more detailed engineering work in the future. So it could move a little bit, but that's the general location.
Okay, um, cuz I had an idea. I was wondering if it would make any sense to combine that route with the one to the left and have it go through the middle in between the two natural resource areas. Do you see the gap? Yeah, good. Yeah, if it went right through there and if it was just one neighborhood route instead of the one on the right and the one on the left, basically merging the two together. That makes sense?
I understand what you're saying. Yeah.
Okay. I don't know if that's feasible. I don't know if it was looked into, but I'm just curious.
You can take another peek at it. I couldn't answer that off the top of my head, but I appreciate you pointing it out.
Okay, um, otherwise, yes, I support the changes in the conceptual map. I got a little bit excited, or at least intrigued, by clustering more of the multifamily because my hope would be that that could make transit more likely because we need tram net out here. And as easy as we can make it on tram net, I think the better. Um, so I think that's really good. I really appreciated the comments some of our other electeds have shared here about commercial and making sure we're getting it. Um, I am also interested in having to make our zoning code flexible and not so that um if people wanna open up a shop in their garage or outside of their house and just like have it be an entrepreneurial startup space. And then eventually, maybe it becomes the whole home is the shop or the grocery or corner store. Uh, so just making sure we're building then flexibility into our zoning. I would love to see that.
All right. Are there any further questions or comments from Council? I think everyone had a chance to chime in. Rob, Brian, is there anything else you need from us?
Nothing comes to mind. It's been very helpful. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Okay, with that, we move on to our second uh work session of the evening, Agenda Bill two, three, one, five, eight. The Southwest Millikan Way Extension Project Design Alternatives. Dan and Jean, hello, the floor is yours.
Hi, uh, thank you, Counselor. Uh, my name is Dan Turk. I'm the project manager of the Millikan Way Project, and I'm joined by Jean Sundershall-Biggs, uh, who is my boss in transportation planning at CDD. So let me share my screen. Thank you for your patience. Uh, thanks for the opportunity to talk to you about Milliken, uh, the Milliken Project. First, I'm gonna give you some background. Then I'll present an overview of the design alternatives, how they might affect area businesses and residents, and how the city would support these. Uh, after touching upon general considerations regarding relocation, I will focus on how these would apply to a specific property, the Royal Manor Apartments. Finally, I'll talk about what else we've heard from the community. The purpose of the Milliken Project is to build a new street between Watson Avenue and Lombard Avenue downtown. This is an important connection between downtown destinations, including the Beaverton Transit Center. The tran- the project is funded with nine point four million dollars from Washington County's Major Street Transportation Improvement Program, or MSTIP. This work session wraps up our community engagement, which took place in May and June and July on the design alternatives, which were developed with guidance from project goals endorsed by Council in December. The project team will develop the preferred alternative over the summer and share it with the community this fall. Uh, this will include a planning level cost estimate. Planning will conclude with a planned report for Council consideration in early 2024. The vision behind the design alternatives talks about the environment we would like the new street to be. First, it's about building streets for people, streets that ensure everyone can safely and comfortably get to where they need to go. Streets for people also create welcoming and interesting community space that supports businesses and residential activity. Secondly, our vision is about setting the stage for future development. We envision multi-story buildings where people live and work and restaurants and stores along and interacting with the sidewalk. I'd like to briefly focus on design altern- how design alternatives incorporate some important street elements differently. Uh, the first is sidewalks. The project proposed to builds proposes to build wider sidewalks on both sides of the street, providing space for everyone to move comfortably, space for outdoor dining and shopping, and landscaped areas. The city could build fifteen-foot sidewalks throughout the project or instead build a narrower street with twelve-foot sidewalks and then require new building construction to expand them. The second street element is curb space, which the city defines as a flex zone, which can provide area areas for truck loading and delivery, deliveries, ride sharing, car bicycle parking, and outdoor dining. Streets with flex zones can also accommodate stormwater planters. The city could include flex zones along the entire length of Milliken. They could also include them only in key locations to build a narrower street and avoid impacting some buildings. Building the new street according to any alternative will require the city to purchase multiple adjacent properties and to support relocating those businesses and residents that are affected. Some of this acquisition is needed for any alternative, while some is needed only in the case of some alternatives. The city must follow the Federal Uniform Act in providing relocation support. This is a well-established process that includes specific benefits to eligible property owners, businesses and residents, including relocation assistance, moving benefits, and certain rights. The city does have the option to expand upon the benefits or the eligibility of the Uniform Act. Staff plans on presenting a recommended approach with respect to this when we present the preferred alternative. The project embraces the goals of the Beaverton Downtown Equity Strategy. The design alternatives include options that minimize residential and business displacement. If displacement occurs, the project will support individuals and families in finding and moving into new homes or business locations that work well for them. Now that I've touched upon some important general considerations regarding relocation, I wanna focus on a specific property, the Royal Manor Apartments. First, I wanna talk about who lives there, then how they could be affected by the project, and finally, what we've heard from the community, including the residents themselves. The Royal Manor Apartments building was purchased by its current owner about twenty years ago. Most residents have lived there for over five years. At least four households have been there for over twenty years. Most live with their families, many of which have younger children. While English is spoken by many residents, many communicate more comfortably in Spanish. A few residents speak either Camero or speak only speak Camero or Farsi. Now talking about how they could be impacted by the project. There are two project scenarios regarding the Royal Manor Apartments. Each of them affects the residents, but in different ways. The first scenario is the new street goes around the building. It'll change the environment. More changes may come after the street is built, including new more new buildings. The Royal Manor Apartments itself could be sold in the future for redevelopment opportunity. The sec- in the second scenario, the city purchases the building. The city provides support to the residents following the Uniform Act. This would include relocation assistance, paying moving expenses, as well as the difference between current and new rent for up to forty-two months. The project team is collaborating with the city's affordable housing team to develop an affordable housing option within the neighborhood. The Bureau-owned Lombard West property located across the street from the Beaver- across Lombard from the Beaverton Transit Center is a key property being evaluated in the Bureau Portfolio Redevelopment Strategy Report, which the Bureau Board will consider at their July twenty-fifth meeting. This report recommends that this property be the first developer solicitation. The housing needs of the Royal Manor Apartment residents is a concern of many community members. We've been able to converse with twenty-one out of the twenty-six households at the Royal Manor Apartments. One presented with the two project scenarios I just showed you. Some residents said they prefer being relocated, while others said they prefer to stay. Still, others didn't express a preference. Those who stated a preference to move cited the greater amount of traffic that may result as part of the new street or disruptions from its construction. Other challenges highlighted were their safety and noises and smells from nearby roads and businesses. Those who would prefer to stay said that they value the affordability of their apartment, the central location, and the community. Among other community members, many believe that this property should not be acquired. Others view relocation as viable if it's well-coordinated with planned nearby affordable housing that could allow residents a choice to stay in the neighborhood. We heard a lot more from the community. Uh, you have a whole exhibit uh that talks about this or summarizes this. Several the key several key takeaways emerged. Community members want street elements that bring the biggest increase to the safety and comfort of people walking and biking. But at the same time, they're concerned about the right-of-way acquisition uh involved. They appreciate how redesigning and signalizing intersections will improve the visibility of pets and bikes and the priority given to people walking and biking. People value, see value in several uses for flex zones. However, there wasn't a clear preference on how much of them to build. Some property owners recognize the benefit of the new street and wanna be part of it. At the same time, potentially impacted business owners and residents question the need for the project and don't want things to change. Finally, with respect to construction, businesses believe that if customers have difficulty accessing their locations during construction, they will go elsewhere and possibly not return. So thank you for listening to me. Now we'd like to hear from you. Uh, with respect to your input, we have the following three questions. Have the alternatives adequately balanced the trade-off between implementing a complete street design and impacts to private properties? Secondly, what do you see as the benefits and risks associated with the alternatives? And lastly, what information will you need to consider the preferred alternative this fall? Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Do you mind leaving the questions up for us?
Not at all.
All right, thank you. Um, Council Tipnan?
Thank you. Um, I don't know if I can answer to these questions yet, so I'm just gonna start with the list of things that have been floating through my mind for uh a very long time now as we've been talking about this project. We've had city staff that have dedicated all sorts of time to help counselors understand it, understand the history of this project, taken us on site visits. We've heard from members of the community, business owners. Um, and of course, we have all the work with Bureau in understanding the different parcels that we have for properties we've acquired and um the longer-term vision for that general area as it relates to um increasing housing options, density, economic vitality, uh, that list goes on and on, transit-oriented development. Um, and then balancing that against the downtown equity strategy, trying to protect affordable housing, especially naturally occurring affordable housing that does not require subsidization from the city. Um, and I'm left with many concerns about this project. Uh, also coming off of the heels of a ten million dollar deficit, some really painful decisions that had to be made during this budget cycle and the cost and price tag of this project uh versus the many, many other uh priorities that we have in front of us that also require um funds. So my concerns basically boil down to uh six different areas. Uh, timing, uh, the fact that this is happening prior to the development of the properties that Bureau has required to the west of the extension area. I understand that that's a big uh motivator for this, is that there is a prediction that there will be increased demand for this road from all sorts of users and uh that developers, I'm guessing, would want to see this done as an incentive for their projects down the road. Um, it is in the TSP. It is something that uh is there for for developers to see. And I, from what I understand, developers look at the TSP very closely when they're making decisions. Um, so I think, I think that there's enough there already um for for developers, uh, but that's just speculation on my point, my part. Um, the other thing right now is that is currently the the traffic along Milliken is pretty nominal from my experience, and I I'm around that area multiple times a week and different times of the day. Um, I do support looking at increasing safety along the intersection uh at Watson and and um, sorry, at Hall and seeing what we can do about that. Um, so that's, that's, that's two, timing, and then lack of uh current traffic counts. Um, talked about cost. Uh, lack of support is a big one for me. We have a lot of uh businesses, business owners in the area that are very concerned about this project. There's eminent domain that would be involved in this, I expect. Um, I don't take that lightly. And uh, there's also a building that's in the way. Historic um structure that's been in Beaverton for a very, very long time. What would happen to it is a question mark, and um in all likelihood, it's probably going away. Maybe we can relocate it, but I haven't seen anything firm on that, and um that's, that's also something that troubles me. Um, but as far as uh getting back to how we would acquire this land if the property owners are not willing sellers, um, we have mechanisms because of the type of project it is to compel them to. And one of the core tenants of of um the uh Beaverton Urban Renewal um plan is that we would always work with willing sellers. And I realize that this is not a project that is technically overseen by Bureau. Um, but it is in direct support of everything that Bureau is doing and stands for. So to me, they are connected, even though they're not um technically. So I have a problem with that. Um, and I don't know if I could support it just based on that. Uh, the last thing, and I'll I'll just mention it again, is is the removal of naturally occurring affordable housing. We have um from what you just said, Mr. Turk, and I thank you so much for all the work that you have done on this. Um, we've heard from residents of the Royal Apartments. The fact that people have lived there for so many years tells me they feel safe in that location, they can afford it, and there's something about that location that keeps them there. And there's something about that location that keeps them there. Um, the fact that they are so close, like they can see the busiest transit center um, right outside there where they live. Uh, almost no one gets that and they have that right now. And we're talking about taking that away. Um, the cost of relocation is alarming to me and I don't know how we would possibly uh, really, really relocate successfully folks into the Lombard site, which we don't even know when that's gonna happen. So that one seems um too speculative to really hang your hat on. Um, so that's what's been in my head. Um, I can't really answer to these questions because I don't, I don't think that the timing is right for this project. I don't think that means that it can't ever happen, but uh, now just doesn't seem like the time to me. So I, I'm gonna leave it there. Um, thank you for listening and I'm looking forward to hearing what others think.
Councillor, would, would you like me to a, address or give more information regarding the points that you made or, or not at this time?
Uh, I'll, I'll follow the, if others are um wanting to weigh in, if others want to hear it, I, if you want to bundle it, I'm happy to follow the lead of others on this. But I, I would absolutely love to hear what you have to say to all of that that I spewed out there for you.
Well, first of all, thank you for taking so much time and thought to this project. And uh, and uh, yeah, thank you for recognizing the amount of work that we've put into it and uh, especially with, with communicating with you and, and the rest of the community. Uh, just a few thoughts, you know, you mentioned the traffic. Uh, you know, there is a traffic study that's being conducted as part of this project. Uh, and uh, we're finalizing the, we'll have more final results for this when we have the preferred alternative. Uh, and this has been, part of this is a transportation model growing traffic into the future. Uh, and uh, you know, one example is a traffic study is telling us that, you know, there's gonna be a significant amount of traffic on Milliken and uh, you know, the need for the signalizing the intersections, just as an example. Uh, you mentioned the lack of support for the project. I know that there have been some emails that have been sent and some, uh, some of the business owners, uh, including some that have been communicating with us that express their opinions. I would just like to say that, you know, uh, a big part of our project has been reaching out to the community in many different ways. Uh, our, our, our community advisory committee, talking to businesses and property owners directly, online surveys, boards and commissions. And there has been uh, a lot of support uh behind improving and behind, behind this project and particularly improving the environment for bicycles and pedestrians. Uh, you mentioned the historic building, that's something that we would assess and we would continue moving forward uh in terms of uh, you know, how to mitigate, uh, perhaps move the building. Uh, the other thing is I just wanna, you know, the, the, there's a lot of things that we've heard. And one thing I just wanted to touch upon is some of the property owners of the businesses that have been more vocal, at least for example, tonight have, uh, as I put in my notes, have been uh, you know, saying they really don't see the need for the project or the redevelopment. There have been other property owners that are willing sellers and that, uh, that see the need for the project. Uh, so as a whole, there's, there's a balance there. Uh, and uh, uh, you know, your concern about naturally uh, naturally occurring housing is a very, very legitimate one and one that we take very seriously. And we're working very hard with our commu, with our affordable housing team to make sure that there would be options that would be provided. Yes, there is a risk, both in terms of the timing of this project and the other. So sorry, I was probably equally long winded, but thank you very much for your thoughts to the project and your concerns.
Thank you. Thank you both. Mayor Beatty.
Uh, thank you, Dan, for some of those comments. Cause I think what's challenging as an elected official is coming into projects that are kind of already in motion. And when we're talking about the TSP, we're talking about Mstep funds. It took a lot of building regional support to get the funding mechanism in place for this project. And I think what's challenging for us is, you know, we have to build some time for the future, but not what it looks like right now. And that's what this project is. I do think there's some ways for us to take comments from, you know, like the coffee owner to have more of a contact sensitive design, where maybe the sidewalk in that particular area is a little bit narrower, so we're not taking so much right away. There's a lot of things that we can do to accommodate some of these things. We don't have an historic building policy now. Um, that doesn't mean we shouldn't have one. Um, we'd wanna look at that. For me, you know, when I think about natural occurring uh low income housing, I, I don't think that I maybe share Councillor Tivnan's opinion of they feel safe, that's why they're there. Having grown up incredibly poor, it's probably that they don't have anywhere else to go. Um, and if everything started developing around them, I, my, I, it would be doubtful to me that it would stay as cheap as it is. Um, I also would wanna know about the age and condition of the building. From what I understand from a lot of the residents is there hasn't been a lot of upgrades to the building. And if he starts doing upgrades to the building, does that natural affordability go away? So how do we have some kind of, we stop a whole entire road project um for the units that are there? How do we guarantee that they stay natural occurring affordable housing? We can't compel that guy to own it forever. And if he sells it, just by merely selling it, the rent's gonna go up because the property is appreciated over 20 years that he's owned it. Those are things that I'm, I'm thinking about right now. I don't know if I have like uh, a picked out alternative or picked out which one I'd like to see yet. But I do think having a little bit more information about the age of the building, um, the condition it's in, how long could it stay like that without major renovation? Are we talking five years, 20 years, 30 years? Those things will be really important in my decision making. Um, and then when we're talking about some of the things that already exist there, a cool coffee shop on the corner. Is there a way for us to think about, can it look a little bit different to accommodate? And I would see this project as phasing. You know, we're, we're doing a lot of work on the loop. Can we do the first phase of the loop for the one that touches Milliken right now and phase kind of how we're doing things? Um, I've watched our past council kiss away millions of dollars for Canyon Road over technicality of a bike lane being not a foot longer than we wanted. When it comes to massive money in the region coming to us, which is coming to us with Mstep, um, if we say no to it, we're not gonna ever get it again in our lifetime. And so I think it's important for us to recognize that if we decide we do not want this project, not only would the funding go away and we would never get it, it would also be really hard for us to compete and get money in the future. Because if we become a city that asks for money and doesn't do projects we say we're gonna do when we have to go compete with everyone else doing them, we're very much less likely to get them. Thank you.
Mayor, could I just add one quick thing that was addressing Councillor Tivnan's comment? Uh, uh, and you touched upon it as well. And we'll certainly return with more information about what you were talking about. But you know, since, since the last couple of times that we've spoken to councillors, we have really uh gotten a lot more information, both directly from residents and also the owner of the Royal Manor Apartments. And the way that you characterize it is accurate. Uh, we've heard both from residents and from the owner that the rents are significantly lower than market cost. We've heard from the owner that he will need to be raising rents to make improvements in the, in the house, which he hasn't done since he, really since he began owning the property about 20 years ago. Uh, so I just wanted to add that. And of course, we can, we can add more information in the future.
Well, and I think a phased in approach could maybe help some of our concerns while we can let the, the lifespan of that building function a bit longer, given what we know and taking a phase on how we do this um might be the right way for us to think about this project going forward.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, Councillor Ducker.
Yeah, I think, I think both Councillor Tivnan and the mayor make really great points. And I, I'm honestly conflicted. I've been conflicted with this one uh since we got it. And I understand, I also don't wanna give up the money, right? So a couple of the things that I'm considering, I apologize, I didn't stop that uh for my dog in the background. Um, one of the things that I think is really important for me uh is that we don't overbuild this road. Um, some of the alternatives look really wide to me, even though there are only two lanes, like adding a, a turn lane the whole way, like. I struggle with that because things like after Watson, if you're heading westbound, that, that goes away, right? And one of the things that annoys me about driving in some areas is like, I'm thinking over by the Nike campus where I used to work, right? If you're on Walker, two lanes, one lane, two lane, one lane. I'm like, are they making, trying to make me mad as a driver? And, and I just like, I, I think consistency with the existing network, uh, particularly because we're not gonna touch the other half of Milliken for, at least for a long time, would be really important to me. So we're not adding a bunch of amenities that are gonna go away, you know, after three blocks or whatever. Uh, the other thing I think is really important, so I wanna, I wanna scale the road appropriately, right? Uh, the other things I'm considering, our budget, um, that's gonna be a massive, massive impact for me. It is, Councillor Tivnan i- is 100% correct there. Like this feels, it's, it's really hard to uh, and I know they're totally separate funding and everything, but, but go through what we just went through and then uh, increase the budget on a road project that not everyone sees as necessary. Um, so I'm gonna look really hard at the proposed cost of each of the alternatives. That's gonna be a massive driver for me and I would encourage us to live within our means uh as much as possible. And that include, I'm willing to, as a downtown resident and a councillor, I'm willing to give up things in order to stay within our means. Uh, give up amenities that perhaps that we could add later. You know, I think one of the, I think on the presentation you said, you know, the, the sidewalk flexibility, uh, having that built over time, I, I, I think makes a lot of sense to me. Um, and then finally, uh, I do think a lot about conforming versus non-conforming uses and the impact to the businesses. And um, you know, we, we want things like coffee shops, you know what, right? You, you, you can create a great uh pedestrian and cycling infrastructure and atmosphere, but if, if you don't have coffee shops and things like that to go to, you're gonna have an empty sidewalk. So I would, I would be really hesitant to harm existing conforming businesses that we want. I understand, I don't wanna harm any business for the record, but that weighs heavily on me too. Uh, so I appreciate the comments from a couple of the, the folks earlier in the meeting around that. And I'm thinking long and hard about that, particularly around combining that with the scale, right? Do we need as much land as, as we're saying, do we, you know, is there a way we can slim this down and still have a really great or at least a good or a better than average pedestrian experience and then build that over time? Like I think those are things I'm willing to consider. Uh, really good work on this. I know it's complicated. I know you're hurting a lot of cats, so I, I really appreciate this. Um, the walking tour was really helpful. Uh, your expertise has been spot on and I appreciate the outreach. Almost every business owner that I have talked to has at least told me the city has reached out and communicated very well with them. Even if they don't hear, even if they're not hearing the stuff they, you know, that they wanna hear, they're at least hearing. And I, I applaud you for that and the city staff for that. That's incredibly important. And I think uh, I don't think we always do that perfectly. I'm guilty of it myself, I think we all are, but I think that the communication here has been, been pretty, pretty top notch, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councillor.
Councillor Kimmy.
Yeah, um, I, I thank you for the presentation, Daniel, and all the work that your team and Jean that you have done so far, reaching out to the community members and business owners and everybody who's involved. And this project has been on my mind for quite a long time. And I concur with um, Councillor Tivnan and also Mayor uh with their concerns. Um, so with the $9.4 million that we got, uh, what are the scope of work that comes with it? Number one, number two is, as Mayor Beatty has mentioned, can we uh develop the Milliken Way between Watson and Hall initially and phase the project with the funds that we have it, so that we can improve the pedestrian uh experience? And um, uh, people who walk and use the loop, uh, they feel more um safer to do that. Uh, and is there any way to pivot and work and combine the two and phase in the project? And that'll be my question.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Councillor. Uh, I'll, I'll ring in on those two and then Jean, please, uh, share your thoughts as well. Uh, with respect to the 9.4 million, uh, we, we did not uh cost out any of the alternatives. Uh, we will be costing out, uh, you know, planning level costs for our staff recommendation or the preferred alternative. And that cost will include all the elements, uh, including relocation. Uh, so you know, we'll take a look at that now. We do know that uh, it is likely that there will be additional funding that will be needed. I'll let Jean speak to that. Uh, with respect to the phasing, uh, I, you know, there are different ways that you can phase a project. Uh, you know, one is uh sort of geographically by starting in one area and then going to another. The other is by building something along the entire way and then expanding upon that, say, when redevelopment occurs. Uh, I personally think that the latter of those two with respect to this project really from the get go attends to the uh, to the project purpose and many of the project goals in terms of improving uh the bike and ped uh experience. Uh, just doing this between Hall and Watson uh and the intersections there really doesn't uh complete that. You know, there are also uh reasons uh, you know, for the connection to Lombard, how that adds to the bike and the ped experience about accessing Lombard uh in a safe uh location in terms of the, the existing intersection. Uh, as well as the long term vision uh for the extended downtown area. You know, Milliken is, uh, the plan for Milliken is to be a parallel uh collector to Canyon. Uh, and not just in this location, but for, for the future, uh, moving towards 114th, uh, to really uh start having smaller block sizes to have that kind of a development in the downtown. Jean, please add uh to, anything to those two points, please.
Sure. Thank you. Hello, everyone. Jean Senna Schalbich, Transportation Planning Manager in the Community Development Department. Um, a little bit more on the cost, Dan. Um, did share that we do um, uh, believe that when we do get the cost estimate, um, we will have a gap um with the current um, um, and Mstep funds. Um, we are having conversations um at a staff level about other available transportation funding resources, in particular, the transportation development tax, which is our system development charge to help fund um, uh, capital investments um that are capacity and um, capacity improvements. And Milliken is one of the projects on our list um that qualifies for those funds. So that is a source that we know we have available to us. Um, there's just some decisions we have to make about um how much, so that'll come into the conversation in the fall um as we have more information about the total cost of the project. Um, we are coming off the recent um budget process that we just went through. Um, and uh, you know, very well about that. Um, we're not expecting to look at the general fund as a source for this. We know it's just not a source um for this project. So long term, that's just, we know that's not on the table. And it's really our job as staff to, to look for what are all the transportation funding sources that we have. Um, they're limited, but we'll, we'll see what we can find. Um, and I think Dan answered the phasing question um for now. Um, I think that's staff work that we can um do. We haven't really taken that look yet at the project. Um, I think that's helpful guidance for us as we sit down with our um city staff and consultant team um as we look at the preferred alternative and hearing from you all that that's something you, you want to see. We can definitely bring that back to you later. Thanks.
One quick follow up is um, do we have a timeline regards to uh using the fund that we have acquired? And is there any way to incorporate that fund to develop with nearby projects, including the loop?
Hi, um, so you're asking the, the timeline for the funding. I have a feeling Dan is going to get uh pieces of information. I don't know it off the top of my head, um, but we do have that funding available for um several years. Dan, were you looking for an, an answer to that question?
Uh, yeah, sorry about that. The, the gentleman that is uh vacuuming just came by right now and I went over to tell him to move and then I scared him, so I needed to talk to him a little bit. Yeah, no, please, Jean, answer.
Okay, um, so there, there is a timeline on those um. Okay, um, so there there is a timeline on those um funds. It's in our uh grant agreement with Washington County. I don't have the answer um off the top of my head, but we can get back to you with that. Um, and then tell, sorry, say again what the second part of your question was.
Well, any way to use that fund to uh incorporate into the projects nearby like the loop and other.
Oh, okay. Yeah, no, um, the MSTIP funds from Washington County are very specific. They are dedicated to Milliken Way. The enacting ordinance that the Washington County Board of Commissioners. Um, put in place when they approved that the five year funding program that Milliken was included in was very specific. That it be for Milliken Way, but actually the loop didn't really exist in the concept that we have, know of it today, um, when they approved that. So, um, we touched those two intersections um at Hall and Watson. Um, that's kind of about the what we get out of, what we can squeeze out of Milliken, that's part of the loop. But coordination is key, and I think you've all touched on that, and I think you recognize that. And um, we are doing that as well in our team and information's getting shared back and forth.
I think it's important for the city manager to chime in here too, because the city managers have been getting briefed by the county administration, the way that the mayors are. When it comes to MSTIP funds, the county could take it back. And so, um, and they could plug their general fund with it. And so part of what they are signaling to us is that projects that are basically being drawn out. Are likely to have the money clawed back. And so we don't have like infinite amount of time to accomplish it. They're saying they want to stop funding on projects that that people have been sitting on the money for a long time and not doing anything. And ours would likely be on that list. And I don't know, that's what was briefed with the mayors and. I know the city managers had similar briefings.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, not yet. Actually, that meeting is cutting up. Um, but it was put on our radar and so what we're hoping to gain at that meeting is understanding kind of the immediacy of. Whether we're going to be impacted or whether this is a future um potential conversation. But that meeting is coming up um in the immediate near future for me.
So maybe after the meeting, you could do some touches with the councillors to confirm what you heard from there as well.
Great, thank you. Um. I think, having an idea of how the alternatives will affect the cost is definitely going to be an interesting. Piece of information for me when I'm choosing a preferred alternative. Um, I I am not a cyclist, so I am not saying this from an informed perspective. But I think one of our constituents raised that an eight foot um kind of bike path was was pretty wide. Um, and so I would love for us to think about like, what is the? Best use of us um with the space that we, you know, I mean, I know that we are, we're going to be impacting right of way. And different alternatives require different amounts of right of way. Um, but I do think trying to minimize the impacts in some of the areas where we can. And so like, can that be a six foot bicycle, cycle track instead of um eight? And and can we stick to the twelve foot sidewalk instead of the fifteen? Because. It just, you know, the growing amount of right of way that we would need to do this project. Um, is is like, I think we're hearing a lot about it. I also think that. We have to challenge ourselves to design for the future, right? And what the needs of Beaverton are going to be, knowing that this was on like a thirty year plan or whatever, I think it was the twenty thirty five plan. Um, that this is an important road connection for our, for our community. Um, you know, we don't. Even though the timing doesn't feel right right now, to some degree, we also have to do it now to plan for. That the timing of where we're headed, I guess. So I I think I'm, I really want us to continue the conversation and see where we get. I I am really proud of all the outreach efforts that went into talking to everyone that is on this route. Um, a lot of my concerns have been um reduced because of that outreach. And to have heard different perspectives of the residents of the businesses of just knowing like the potential impact here. And and I can't help but continuing to think of the, the concept introduced to me at Bureau, which was that catalytic impact of project work. And I do see this Milliken project as being one of those catalytic projects. And seeing how it ties into Bureau um nearby properties. It it just has this really great opportunity for redefining what does this area look like and really enriching it. Um, and I think one of the things that staff shared with me was that, you know, I was really struggling with the displacement here. And staff talked to me through um some of the displacement things that have happened. How grateful the person who was displaced is or was for that displacement. Because the city does such a caring job of getting them to that next place. And like in an equal or better way. And I think using the uniform um code is actually really helpful in ensuring that that happens. So I know that there's still a lot of to be determined in this project, but I feel confident that it is moving in the right direction. Um, that the, that the trade offs of the complete street design, I think are there, but you know. I think the balance of cost and designer, like where I'm at right now of feeling like, well. Hearing some of the things I've heard, I'm kind of leaning towards maybe like more of the layout that we see in the cross section of an option. Three or four, that one and two is just so beautiful, but you see the 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 greater amount of needed right of way, right? So I definitely think this is one where we're going to be challenged to find the best balance. And I think staff is doing a really good job of putting options in front of us to give us the, the. The tools we need to have the conversation. And I think knowing where MSTIP is going, I don't want us to um lose out on this opportunity. Because the 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 stability of that funding could go in the future. And I um, I went to the Washington County Budget Conversation where they did talk about that, that. There's a lot of projects in MSTIP that haven't started, that are behind, that the county is very much like. We could take it back. We, like, they do have jurisdictional authority to do what they want to with that money. So um, I want to see us see this project through. Um, let's see, councillor Hassan.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I will start off with um just kudos to Jean and um Daniel. I know that you guys do a ton to do outreach, to do research, to come to us with as much information as possible. So that we can be informed and and give you answers to your questions. Um, I do also want to take a moment and recognize all the businesses who took the time to testify. Um, I do hope that um all those individuals. Uh, feel that they can share their feedback with you, with with our staff and us. Like, I think that's really important. I want those lines of communication to be open. Um, I also got a sense from some of the letters like that there was this. Maybe reaction around the work that we're doing and just like, we're still kind of in this like work session planning mode. Although um, I certainly, based on the dialogue I'm hearing since urgency around the MS, the MSTIP funding. I'll take a moment and thank former councillor Sansucy. I actually know what MSTIP is and stands for. Because I did a ton of work on that with Jean. She's laughing. Um. This is tricky. I'm hearing a lot of different perspectives from my fellow councillors and I want to value, you know, each of their different perspectives. You know, I think for me, as I look at. You know, I think of TSP and like, we think of transportation systems plans and we think of like when they're created and then like. What happens over time, right? The TSP really said Milliken Way, extend Milliken Way. And then there's like this small part of me that's like, well, that made sense five years ago, ten years ago. Does that make sense today? Yes, no. Okay, I'm not going to argue that. That's the direction that we need to go. We've got this funding. And so what does that look like? And. I just think for me, like, I I have a lot of anxiety around um the housing. And us feeling like we can just take a a building and rehouse, like, that just feels like a tall order for for me. Um, especially in light of of our budget woes. And so um, I was like trying to read all the letters and kind of. And so part of me was like, is there a way that we can do this without, you know, and I know that that was part of the presentation, we could do this without the Royal Manor. Um, so that's kind of where like my, like my mind is going, though I'm not completely made up. Um, I always support, you know, your perspectives and your thoughts on a lot of this. So um, I'm fairly comfortable with letting you all continue to move if that is the direction that you're hearing from other councillors. Um, I think that as we go more into the extension, like, understanding. If TSP said, you know, Milliken Way is the way, like. Is there any data that we can use or see to help us understand, like, you know, the 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 benefit of making sure that we continue to extend this product? Around, you know, redirecting traffic. And I know, I think I brought this up in our briefing, like, are we? Creating a side where everyone's going through this way instead, you know, like, how are we just balancing that? So those are just like some of the things in our mind. I mean. I think the design alternatives are all excellent. Like, I do tend to um defer a little bit to you all on those things. I think for me, it's, is it safe? Is it focused on our complete streets sort of policy guidance level? Um, and I just, I I will say, I think the thing I'm sitting the most with is um, is the apartments. Um, and 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 how realistic it is for us to really. Imagine relocating, you know, like, that just, that just feels like a very tall order. Um, you know, is there a way that we could do the extension with the money that we have and and maybe kind of stop there? Um, but I'm also super open, so I didn't ask any questions because a lot of folks were able to ask the questions. But just want to take a moment and um, thank you, thank you and thank folks, thank folks for sharing their perspectives on this as well.
Thank you councillor.
All right, we'll go councillor Teeter and then Mayor Beatty.
Yeah, Dan and Jean, this has been a lot of work. You have done quite a bit of pulling to get it to this point. Um, thank you. Um, I'll speak first to the alternatives. I definitely lean towards alternatives three and four. Because they have the smallest impact to adjacent properties. They've got the nearest right of way. Um, specifically, alternative three was the one that I've been consistently drawn to as I've seen these. Um, it just feels like it's meant to be a slower street. Um, it feels like it's more. Human sized, human sized, uh, meant for people who are actually going to be walking and enjoying the street itself. I, I know I have a lot of concerns about this project and I've shared them with the staff and the city manager. Over the past several months. Um, I think we've created some really phenomenal street designs. Like, absent any of the contextual things we're talking about, I think we've created some amazing street designs. And as we move in over the next year to our street design standard discussions. This could be a really great model for some of our collector streets or some of the conversations there. So I just want us to keep these in mind as we keep going forward, as what we can do in the future with all of our streets. Um, for Milliken, I've got a lot of the concerns people have already shared here. I've had a lot of um. People that I, people reach out to me asking me why, why we're doing it. And a lot of the people I'm connecting with, connected with are the transportation nerds, whether they ride bikes or walk or take transit. Um, and I share with them, they are, they are opposed to this, there, there are negatives to this. And it really is a balancing act where we're still working through a lot of the details and trying to learn more. And and see how we can get a project done that really supports the community. Um. I know when I ride on Milliken right now, it feels pretty safe overall. It's one of the safest parts of my commutes. Um, because it's so low traffic and I know we've gotten a lot of comments of, how is it going to be safer if we're increasing vehicular traffic? So I'm thinking of that too. Um, as far as bike lane width, the. The National Association of City Transportation Officials, NACTO, published a paper a few months ago. Recommending bike lanes and like urban areas like this to be between seven and a half, eight and a half feet. And that's to accommodate cargo bikes and figure bikes for people might be carrying kids or goods and. Um. Commuting more in these more urban areas. Um, so I would really love to protect that, that space. Um. Yeah, and as we keep going forward. I'm really trying to balance, how do we work through some of these concerns we've got? Uh, I totally resonate with some of the things that the mayor is saying about um not wanting to lose out on MS tip funding. Um. So Jenny, as you meet with other city managers and learn more about the county's processes. If it looks at all like this project might be cut or we might lose funding from the, from the county. If there is any way that we can ne- negotiate or renegotiate any of the scope to still get some funding to do something. Maybe it's just a different design of the street that's smaller scale. Maybe it doesn't punch through to Lombard. Um. I would just love to not completely throw it out, but see how we can work with something that still supports people. Maybe it's a middle ground that actually works really well. Um, so, yeah, again, Dan and Jean, thank you for your hard work so far and we'll keep working through it.
Thank you councillor.
Mayor Beatty.
Um, I just have a closing thought for us at ten ten. I want you guys on our council to think about how hard it is for us to plan together and get something done and accomplished. And even when it comes to just thinking about a list, transportation projects like this are five, ten, fifteen years out. Um, things that we're talking about now, the Loop, Allen Boulevard. As we start to move these through concept plans, it's not going to be us that action them. It's a future council. And I want us to think about how we are not just honoring councils of the past, but building on their work. And if we every time have an opportunity to grind gears to a halt and stop projects that have been in the pipeline for a long time. We're never going to get anything accomplished. And think about the legacy of how great the city has been at bringing in money, visioning processes, how we're getting things together. I'm not going to try to convince and change some of your minds on Milliken, but I want you to think about how we are part of an ecosystem. And we have part of a heritage of a council that has been forward thinking. Milliken Way is a forward thinking project. It's a project that even um is before my time. So it's not even like something I thought about or or was part of. We're just where we're at now. I do think we're good stewards with our money and I I recognize that some of us are having challenges with the budget. But let's not conflate funds. We can't take street fund money and backfill our general fund and do some of the things that we've had a lot of anxiety about. And so while I understand we're in a budget uh situation, like we got to keep the funds and the main thing, the main thing. I do think there is a win here when it comes to phasing, if our staff could focus on that and see where we're at. Particularly in conjunction with the loop, I think it's going to add value to the loop and put us in line for more future federal funding. And a raised construction grant. So the more work we do around the this, this district, the better our argument becomes. So just like Purple Pipe, just like the ASR wells, there are things that are going to outlast all of us and this is one of those projects. So how do we have input and change it to be reflective? Because councillor Hassan's right, like, when they did this five, eight years ago, their goals were different and our goals are different now. But how do we bring those two things together where we know that things have changed? We have opinions, but we don't derail this project from moving forward. So let's look for that sweet spot when you guys are reflecting the next couple of days on this conversation we've had here today. How do we frame ourselves in a way to get the project going the way that we want it? Where we bring all of our values together and we get something done and accomplished.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan, Jean, do you have what you need from us this evening?
Uh, thank you for asking councillor. Uh, yes, I believe we do. I just want to say thank you for your, your direct thoughts. Uh, your, you know, your concerns, your support. Uh, also just being able to listen to the conversation, uh, that's been very helpful. And uh, yeah, Jean, I don't know if you had anything to add in closing, but I just want to say thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's been a good conversation. Appreciate hearing your thoughts.
Yeah, um, and thank you for staying late, um, Dan. Uh, I'm sorry that you're there when, when um the vacuuming is is happening hopefully. Uh, our candidates not too startled.
I can tell you that this was much more interesting to wait than during the traffic commission when we had to wait.
Okay. Oh, good. Uh, well, thank you. Thank you so much. Our next agenda item is council new business. Are there any, oh, yes. All right, councillor Kimmy.
I just a quick one, uh, to continue the conversation about multicultural center. I would love to work with maybe councillor Hassan and work with Jenny about moving this project forward. And then maybe see it, work on it, um, and then oversee and then work with the staff.
I think it would be appropriate for Jenny to come back to us with where she's at in the process. And if we want to create a subcommittee, which I think is what you're asking for, it, we could do that and it would probably need to be three. So I don't know, you could pick your own survivor, beat people off the island, uh, if we want to create a subcommittee. Because I think council gave pretty clear direction to the city manager. So I think we need, before we can make the next phase, is like where the city manager is with the direction that council's already given from the retreat.
Is that what?
There.
You want, Jenny?
I'm more than happy to come back and give you an update um in terms of kind of the path now and then the path forward as it relates to. Um, the needs assessment and then any type of process that's. and then any type of process that's leading up to that. And then if the council wants to add on to that, form a subcommittee, we can have that as a part of that broader conversation, if that's a purgatory council. And then just keep in mind that whatever we do, I'll need to figure out how to pivot resources depending on how deep you want to go and what additional work you might want to consider.
Counselor Hassan, do you have a follow-up?
I was just going to pop in and say, like, I know that there's been a lot of conversation, but I don't know that I feel like I have clarity. So even just if like we can get some of that from Jenny. But I, I don't know that we have to have three, but I'd love to just make sure we're like talking through what that looks like and, and coming to you guys with some updates as well.
So just a quick one. So you guys are more than welcome to join the fun group or subcommittee in the future. All right.
Thanks, Dr. Kimmy. Hopefully the uniform is pink. And it's, I'm seeing a lot of, enough head nods to have Jenny come back and give us an update and then we will take next steps from there. Okay, thank you. Counselor Duggar.
Yeah, just real quick, the council has asked that the first street dining commons be made permanent and we, we found a funding path this year. So I'd like to, I'd like to ask Jenny to come back with some recommendations. I don't want to, the end of the year to creep up, creep up on us again and then us to have to scramble. I think we need to have a permanent funding conversation and, and a conversation on what the first street commons looks like is an ongoing thing. And I just, like, that feels like a gap to me from where we were to where we want to be. So I was just hoping to get an update and kind of a permanence plan on maintenance and all, all the kind of stuff that goes into it and how we can fund that so we're not scrambling at the end of this budget year to continue it.
Yeah, I, I think we also kind of wanted that from the budget, so it's a good reminder. And we'll have the city manager bring back kind of a path forward for us on that as well.
Thank you. Counselor Hassan. Oh, sorry, did you have another Counselor Duggar?
No, no, that was it, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Hassan.
I actually just wanted to comment to that. I was trying to get it out of here, but I do want to say like, yes, I would support Counselor Duggar in like bringing something back. But I also want to be thoughtful of like, I don't want to make any budget, you know what I mean? Like just cart horse. So yes, let's talk about it, but I want to make sure that we're having the ability to say, okay, here's where our priorities are, here, here aren't, if that makes sense. So I'm fine to like say, yeah, let's have Jenny come back with something, but that's not us committing to anything, I guess, is what I want to say.
City manager, did you have a response?
I think it's important in that conversation and not to get too down the rabbit hole that the council understands the funding framework of what they want to consider because it would be very helpful for me. And we could have multiple touches that that works for the council to understand what your priority is going into the 24, 25 budget. We can do that at a work session, we can do that at your retreat. But I really do need to know that I've an expectation around that you want the general fund to pick up that full cost and keep that open for next year. That's something I really need to know so that I can start building a budget around that. So at some point, we do need to get clarity and it can be yes or no, but just any kind of clarity would be helpful.
I would say nowhere on the council has decided we want it all to come out of the general fund. It's been partly funded by Bureau as a Bureau asset. So I think what we need from you as the city manager is a couple of suggestions and for us to be able to make that decision.
Agree. And just as a reminder is that the council had also, through Bureau, directed a program income, a policy. And that is really critical to get done because it is a part of this and it will determine whether you want to use that money and justify that or a combination of general fund and Bureau proceeds.
And I just want to say I'm not ready to commit the general fund. That was my one, let's make sure that's out there, so.
Yeah, I think that's fair call, cool. Okay, any final council new business items?
I just want to say thank you tonight. It's been a bit of a struggle, bust over here at the Beatties with Ian's gone. So thank you, Allison, for jumping in the deep end. Thank you, Council President, for taking over facilitation. It really is helpful to know that we can work as a team like this when one of us has something going on in the background. So I just appreciate you guys' understanding and thank you for all the facilitation work, Council President.
Yeah, happy to help. All right, with that, we are adjourned. See you all next week.